...location and Pastor Fred Walters with the New Life Church, please come forward.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, Lord, we just thank you for this day and all our blessings. Lord, we thank you for this opportunity to be here today and participate in this meeting. Lord, we ask you to continue to bless each of us in these proceedings, Lord, to look down on us and guide us and direct us, or give us wisdom, knowledge, and understanding, and above all, common sense, as we endeavor to do your business. Lord, we thank you for this nation, our state and our city, and certainly our community. Lord, we especially thank you and ask blessings for those men and women serving in our military, those people serving in our governments, both local and federal, our law enforcement agencies, fire departments, our first responders, and everyone in leadership positions. Father, we just ask you to continue to bless Benita Springs as a city and a community that will keep you at the center of our attention. Now, Lord, as we conduct this meeting, we ask that you guide our every thought and deed. Lord, we ask that everything we do and say will bring you glory. We pray and ask these things in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Counselor, will you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Thank you, Mayor. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call, please.
Councilwoman McIntosh, Councilwoman Martin, Councilwoman Slacta,
Here.
Mayor Nelson,
Here.
Councilwoman Simmons,
Here.
Councilwoman Gibson,
Here.
Councilman Lockhart.
Here.
All right, good evening, everyone.
Good evening, Mayor.
All right, I think, let's see, Councilwoman Martin is not here, she's on vacation or some such thing, so she has an excused absence here. That brings us to public comment on agenda items, and that's on agenda items only. Any member of the public wishing to speak at this time, please come forward.
Mr. Mayor, Council, fellow Benetians, Jesse Purdon, District 2, for the record. I'd like to discuss Agenda Item Number 15B, to proceed with the installation of buffer wall on East Terry Street in the Royal Pine subdivision, right across from where I live. Let me start with the administrative code AC-13-002. As you know, Council, it's separated into three categories. Assuming we clear the hurdle that the project is maintaining and enhancing the quality of life, which I don't believe we've had an argument about, number one, it's for folks who live on unpaved and poorly maintained roads, not the case here. Two, privately maintained ponds and drainage infrastructure, once again, not the case here. What we're talking about is a request for road buffering for private property. Now, according to the code, there's two ways that that can be done. The first, which we are discussing today, is a physical wall. The second part of the code, and actually first in order, is a natural or vegetative wall, which we are not discussing, but I indeed am proposing. Now that the framework's set, I'd like to say that I agree in principle that we should provide the site buffer. However, it needs to be done, in my opinion, in a natural or vegetative state, instead of as a physical wall. Now, why would I say that? A vegetative or natural wall will still serve the same purpose as this proposed slight wall. Additionally, it will be more noise-absorbent, and frankly, it'll be more statistically pleasing. We just took the fence down, thanks to the mayor, not too far down Terry Road, and everybody likes it, it looks great. Now, here we are, about two miles further down the road, and we want to put up the wall. Listen, we have countless examples throughout Benita Springs. Go with me, Old 41 North of Terry, across from Old 41 Restaurant, Serrano, Palmero, on Woods Edge South. We know how to do it, and we know how to make it look good, so we can still give the folks what we want while still simultaneously beautifying Benita. I think it's important that we do it in a consistent manner for the direction and the developments that we already have all over Benita Springs. In closing, I'd request that City Council vote to approve the idea of a natural buffer, as opposed to a physical wall as a friendly amendment. Thank you for all that you do, have a very safe and happy Fourth of July. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Anyone else wishing to speak on any Agenda item?
Good evening, folks. Rick Steinmeier, 7C. Go Team Benita. Yes, yes. Glad to see we're progressing along, our manager's doing a good job in taking care of his people, and I'm so proud of this city, it's unbelievable. Now, 11B is this purchasing. Question I have, did we get...
Sorry, go ahead.
I say...
Pay no attention to that man behind the curtain.
Okay, that's a green light. All right, we're moving too fast. Question on the purchasing, does this increase or decrease the oversight of the purchasing by the city? I see Naples is having all kinds, Collier County's having all kinds of confusion over paying their bills and stuff. 15B, I think that we still have a $1,000 reward for anybody that turns in a tagger, somebody that paints these walls, or defaces these walls. I think we still have a reward for... We haven't had that problem in many years, and I hope we don't have it now. We have lots of walls, though. Now, mineral rights at 8C, gee, we're really sticking our noses out here. We got a lot of people have a lot of property rights and mineral rights, and I don't think it's right for us to just go take them away like this. So, that's my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this time, please come forward on any Agenda item? Hello?
Hello, Mr. Chairman.
Hello.
Mayor, members of the commission, my name is Ron Weaver, 401 East Jackson Street, Tampa, Florida, with the Sterns Weaver Miller Law Firm, and we would request to speak, if we could, please, to Item Number 8C regarding an amendment to 4-1380 relating to approvals for excavation activities to prohibit well stimulation, providing for conflict, et cetera, and would request, if I could, eight minutes instead of four because of the severity of the effect upon our client Collier Resources. If I may, please have eight minutes instead of only four.
Why don't we just go ahead and give you some time during the reading of the ordinance there, how about that? You can speak for four minutes now, if you'd like, and then we can let you speak again at that time.
Thank you very much.
Go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, I represent Collier Resources Company, which owns land and thousands of acres of mineral rights here in the city of Benita Springs, and we were able to exchange a little bit of correspondence earlier. Collier Resources has owned much of its property since the 1900s, as you may know, and has been in the business of leasing its minerals for oil and gas exploration since at least the 1940s, and all over the state has about 800,000 acres with respect to mineral rights, which we'd like to talk about briefly tonight in relation to your proposed ordinance. Hydrocarbon resources do exist within the city of Benita Springs. However, that oil is 12,000 feet deep, and the drinking water is within 2,000 feet, in some cases only 150 feet, or 250 feet. Therefore, there, between the oil and the water are seven natural impermeable anhydrite layers. The natural impermeable barriers prevent the oil from seeping that two-mile difference up into the aquifer. We have scientists to explain this better than I. The hydraulic fracturing currently is the focus of both the federal and state regulations actively in process. The EPA's preliminary assessment on the subject came out last week, which found, and I quote, "The number of identified cases where drinking water resources were impacted are small relative to the number of hydraulically fractured wells." This warrants reasonable health and safety regulations, but not an outright ban on hydraulic fracturing and well stimulation. The best minds in the business are meeting in September and October in Washington at the EPA to figure out what is best within their jurisdiction, which respectfully, we believe that rather than jumping the gun and working at cross-purpose to them, you should proceed to work with the state and the federal authorities. The House passed a bill on it, the Senate didn't quite, they didn't quite get to it for procedural reasons. You may have noticed the six or seven billion-dollar reasons between them. The Florida House, therefore, passed legislation that's within the ambit of the state, it's within the ambit of the federal authorities, and we believe to work, to jump the gun and work at cross-purposes interferes with state and federal regulation on the subject. The city's proposed ordinance will be a lightning rod, which will draw unnecessary lawsuits against the city that would become moot or unnecessary once the federal and the state governments had an opportunity to digest the state of the science and do something about it, and we haven't seen that you have that science, and I'd like to speak again, if I may, at the time of the ordinance.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
It's our pleasure. Thank you very much. Anyone else this time, please come forward?
Good evening. My name is Attorney Ralph Brooks, and I represent the Conservancy of Southwest Florida. I, too, would like to follow up with regard to Item 8C, the well stimulation ordinance, and speak again at that time, just a brief introduction now to let you know that the federal government and the state government will not protect you. Fracking has the ability to change the landscape. If you visit North Dakota, Pennsylvania, where fracking is occurring, if, maybe if you were there as a child, you will see that it has changed the landscape. If fracking comes to Benita Springs, and they find oil, and they begin fracking this city, it is up to you to utilize your zoning, enabling authority, your zoning home rule powers, to say where those wells should be, and how those wells should use or not use heavy industrial activities. This ordinance doesn't prohibit conventional oil drilling that's gone on here in Collier County since the 1940s. What it does do is stop extreme drilling, the heavy industrial activities that are associated with well stimulation treatments using fracking chemicals, many of which are carcinogenic. The spills that are occurring in the fracking fields are not just underground in the groundwater, they're also occurring in the surface. There's blowback, the blowback water can enter streams and surface waters. At the Hogan Well, the state DEP sued Dan A. Hughes for surface water spills at the drilling pad. You have some incredible surface waters here that lead to Estero Bay and lead to the Gulf of Mexico, that lead right through the middle of your community. You want to make sure that you don't prohibit oil and gas drilling and interfere with mineral rights. They can still do that, but we want to see here is a prohibition by zoning district, by zoning district, against heavy industrial well stimulation treatments using fracking chemicals, particularly next to residences, next to schools, next to City Hall. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this time, please come forward on any Agenda item. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and proceed with the remainder of this. See, where's our two, see, proclamations and presentations, and today we have our good friends Carol Green and Ashley Staceley. If you'd like to come on up here and give us a presentation on our 2015 legislation. Did some of that actually happen? Did it?
Well, there are those who said that it did.
Okay.
We're here to tell you the other side of the story. No.
Okay.
Thanks so much. It's always a pleasure to be with you, and we certainly appreciate the invitation to be with you this evening to share with you a few of our comments in regards to the session, and certainly take any questions that you might have of any burning issue that you think may have been or not been addressed during that. First and foremost, I appreciate that several of you came up and visited this year, and that was really nice. I can promise you that I always enjoy seeing familiar faces from home because the days get long up there sometimes, so it's always nice to see friendly faces from home. To say that this was a unique session is probably an understatement. We went into it with a lot of, a lot of heavy, heavy issues in regards to a lot of, especially funding issues, things that had to do with Medicaid, obviously, people were reading about that, the low-income pool, the fact that federal government was not going to follow through, which is, is very important from the standpoint of it, it's a couple billion dollars that goes into the state, so we had to then find ways to be able to fund that in other directions. Amendment 1 funding, because of Amendment 1 being passed, there certainly was a lot of discussion into how to fund that, whether or not to fund that. There's always, the education funding is always a huge issue for the state. When the decision was made that there'd be no bonding this year, because that was one of the debates between the House and the Senate, when that decision was made that they would not bond any funds, that created another concern, again, between the two chambers. So, I think that all of those things played into it. Now, the thing that really happened that was very interesting was April 28th, the date, I'll never forget it, whenever we were monitoring everything that was going on between the House and the Senate, they were both in session, we were the last week of session, we were anticipating everything being done by the end of the week, and three days prior to that, all of a sudden, out of nowhere, the House adjourned, which was a shock, needless to say. I know when I was watching it happen, if it'd been April 1st, I would have expected someone to say it's April Fool's Day, because it just was something that, in my 20 years, I'd never seen, something that happened like that. So, as the House is leaving, interestingly enough, Senator Richter was presenting his fracking bill on the Senate floor, and the Senate, of course, with the technology the way it is today, everybody's texting each other, and they knew what was going on, on the Senate floor, but the Senate President kept going through questions and kept working the fracking bill, which then created even more of a stir until someone actually stood up and said, "Mr. President, they've adjourned," you know, and, and he said, "That's okay, we're going ahead with the people's business." So, the complication about that is not just what happened, the complication, just, and I know that Ashley's going to go into this in just a little bit to give you an example of it, the complication is that anything that was in process being, going from one House to the other, going from the Senate to, from the House, rather, to the Senate, meant that the Senate either had to take the bill, or the bill died, and so it was kind of take it or leave it at that particular moment. And so that created, obviously, a lot of tension between the two chambers, and of course, now, within the last couple weeks, there's been a lot more tension that's, that's come up because of the vetoes that we saw with the budget with the governor. So, because of all of those things, you know, you can just, just pick your poison anywhere around the whole city and know that, that somebody there is unhappy with somebody else. I know that you all know this, that we're not keeping any secrets from you, but it's always nice to have Ashley with us, because you do know she is the brains, and she's the one who does the reports, and she's here to share with you some of the, they're all, they're all smiling. She's here to share with you some of the details of just a few of, highlights, a few of the bills that we did work with this year, and some of the outcomes.
Thank you. Thanks, everybody. It's good to see everyone. I'm sorry I wasn't in Tallahassee with you this year, and I hated to miss it, but I had my baby girl at home, and she needed me, so I apologize, but I did miss everybody, and I heard you had a great time, so, and I didn't get to see you, Councilman Lockhart. Sorry about that.
[laughing]
It's her first visit, and I missed it. I'm sorry. I won't go into too much detail, I'll just kind of hit the 30,000 level, because I know you all read every single report I sent out, cover to cover, word for word. It was riveting, I know you enjoyed it, so I'll just hit the highlights.
She wants to be a novelist in her next life, so...
Yes, maybe I'll throw in a few sentences now and then, see if you're...
You're probably going to want to pick a different subject.
I know. You're, you're right about that. Just to give you a little bit of statistical knowledge, there were only 1,700 bills filed this year, and that's the lowest in the last, I think, 15 years, in terms of number of bills filed, and out of that, only 231 passed both chambers, so that's 13%. That's about average. It's usually 15%, it's a little bit lower than that, but the number of bills being filed these days is decreasing, decreasing, decreasing. And most of those bills that passed both chambers were House bills, 154 House bills and 77 Senate bills. But, the good news is that our top priority passed this year, and that was getting the Pelican Landing lots fixed. That was a huge issue last year. Unfortunately, that piece of that legislation didn't get done, but we got it done this year. I know you're extremely happy about that, and I don't blame you, because I'm sure you run into people that were very upset, and understandably so, so I'm very pleased to say that at least we got our top legislative priority done, put to bed, and that's great. One of the bills that passed this year that started off really bad, and we were able to help fix slightly, was the Local Preference Bill, and I'm pretty sure you guys lobbied that when you went up there to Tallahassee. That was the bill that prohibits local governments from putting in your local preference when you solicit construction services. And in that bill, it now reads that if any of the funds, if 50% or more of the funds are paid from the state appropriated funds, at the time of competitive selection, you may not put in your local preference. Now, the key to that is at the time of competitive selection. When that, when this bill was presented on the Senate floor, I believe it was second reading, Senator Chris Smith did an amendment to the bill to put this language in, and the Senate sponsor, Senator Hayes, was very upset about that, because what this does is, if you have a project that you're getting $2 million from the state, and you, it triggers your local preference, later on, if you request more money from the state, it doesn't affect that money over there. So, that's why the, at the time of competitive selection is key, because if you get more money later, and it does affect the whole total of that project, and it's less, so you get 2 million, but you've got 3 million, either federal money or local money, it's not going to trigger that. But, your total money is 4 million from the state, does that make sense? So, out of 7 million, 4 million's from the state, but 3 is over here, your local preference, you could still use. Does that make sense? Okay. That was a huge contentious issue. I'm actually surprised that the bill passed with that in there, because the Senate sponsor, like I said, you could monkey around with that if you wanted to, if you were thinking that through, like, "Oh, well, we'll just get this amount of money, and next year we'll ask for this, and if we get the whole 4 million dollars, we can do our local preference." So, even though it's not a great bill for the city, it's actually better than it was, because on the House side, there was actually an amendment to make the threshold not 50%, but .001%. That amendment got withdrawn. But, so, I mean, it's not a perfect bill, it's not a great bill, but, you know, well, it's there, and it passed, and we'll live with it at this point. Another huge bill that passed was a growth management choo-choo train, is what we like to call them. It was about four or five bills put together in the 11th hour of session, and in that bill, there's probably five major points in there, but one of the significant ones was reducing the regional planning councils down to 10. It didn't affect our area, they consolidated a smaller regional planning council. It removed the requirement that certain new projects go through the DRI process, and instead, go through the State Coordinated Review Process, clarified planning standards for sector planning, and it created a 10-year pilot project for connected city corridors in Pasco County. So, probably the key things out of there is, for, for the city, is probably the DRI process, and shifting some of that to the State Coordinated Review Process. Another little bill that we were watching affected skateboarding. In state park, in state, our skate parks now, the cities or the counties are required to get a signed parental consent form for anyone under 17, and now, to preserve immunity for local governments, you don't have to get that form anymore. If you don't have that form, it's, it's okay. You don't need that form, if, if it pertains to skateboarding, inline skating, or freestyle bicycling. So, that was another bill we were watching. And then in special session, the tax cut bill finally passed. In that bill, it does reduce the community services tax by 1.73%, but it holds local governments harmless. It only affects general revenue, state-funded general revenue. There's many things in that bill, and I won't bore you with all of them, but some of the other key things in there were the 10-day back-to-school sales tax holiday that I know most people love. It exempts purchases of college textbooks. Also, school-supported organizations that hold any sort of concession stand sales, they don't have to pay sales tax on those sales anymore. So, that's great for all of our schools and all of their sports activities. And the other thing that was in there, it is, is it exempts administration and membership fees for gun clubs. I just throw that out there, because that was a really contentious issue that was put into the bill. And those are kind of the highlights of things that passed. And like I said, not a lot passed this year, not only were there not a lot of bills filed, but also with the House adjourning three days early, stuff was just dying left and right. And in some ways, that's a good thing, in my personal humble opinion. That's just Ashley Staceley talking for the record.
All right, any questions for Ashley? Anyone? Nice job.
Forgot to mention the budget.
Oh.
There was a budget.
I was, I was getting there.
They passed the budget?
That was just part one of my presentation. Oh, sorry, crowd, I'm sorry, I'll hurry up. You can pull, pull me off the stage any moment. The budget.
Yeah, boom.
Okay, the budget. No one wanted to get the budget done more than we did.
That's true.
But as you know, we went in a special session for the budget, and this year, there were $461 million worth of vetoes, the second highest in 15 years. So, there. The budget passed on, on June 19th, and the governor signed it behind closed doors on Tuesday. Passed Friday, signed Tuesday. No one really knew that was happening, and it was behind closed doors. Just to throw that out there, that's a fact.
And the president of the Senate lost about $50 million worth of projects.
Yeah, yeah. A lot of senators lost some projects in the budget. So, just so you know, it was the second highest amount of dollars vetoed over the last 15 years. And last year, to give you some idea where we're at, last year, he only vetoed 68 million, so he vetoed seven times that amount this year. I am happy to say that even though we didn't get our Terry Street money, which frankly, when we went into regular session, we were focused on the water, the beach renourishment, and we actually were asked by a senator to put in a transportation project, and so we did. And so, we threw that out there, we had all our paperwork together. It actually was, showed up on spreadsheets very early, like past 1, when they, when the conference committees met. It showed up on the spreadsheet first time out of the gate. So, we were really happy to see that money for Terry Street, for the pedestrian and bicycle path, and we really thought that was going to go through. In the bill, under proviso, that line items out where specific money is going to be spent, there were nine projects under that proviso, the whole thing was vetoed. It wasn't just our project, our project didn't affect another project, it was almost $8 million underneath that, those, that section, and the whole thing was vetoed. Also, the money for Lover's Key for their visitor center, they actually did, they did get $300,000, that was vetoed, too. But, we did get 500,000 for Benita Beach Renourishment, so that was great. And with the water projects. With Amendment 1 being an issue and needing to fund this year, and no bonding, the amount of water projects total in the budget went down by $15 million. And out of that, the governor, let me see, he vetoed $26 million worth of water projects. So, even if we would have gotten it in the budget, the chances of it getting vetoed were pretty high. And we actually didn't see a water project list. See, the budget went to print on Monday, we saw it Sunday night at 11:30 PM. That was the first time throughout the whole, both regular session and special session, that we ever saw a list of water projects, which is, I mean, last year, we saw it late, but not, at 11:30 at night on a Sunday. So, that's the budget. Am I missing anything about that?
Nope.
I think I've been up here too long, I'm sorry. I'm monopolizing your time.
You've done great.
Do you want to talk about any of this?
I will.
Okay.
Two, two last things that I'll talk about, and then obviously, any questions that you might have. I think some people are interested in this thing called fracking. I kind of got that loud and clear...
Well stimulation.
Well stimulation.
Well stimulation.
Sorry. Anyway, obviously, that, that failed this year, but the thing is that everybody, I think everybody in the audience behind me, I'm not looking at any of them, will tell you, it's not going away. So, and it did pass the House, and, and the Senate, obviously, got caught up in the, the three days there at the end. The other thing is the gaming. We did spend a great deal of time on gaming this year, again. The gaming has not been acted on, there still is a little bit of time left before they have to do anything with that, so with session starting early this year, and we obviously have shared those dates with you already, actually, we'll be back in Tallahassee September 16th. With session starting early enough, we'll be back negotiating the gaming piece, too. We will tell you that, and I know that those of you who were in Tallahassee with us, we did have an opportunity to speak with the minority, with the majority leader, excuse me, and she is still very, very high on making sure that this goes forward, and making sure that Lee County gets included in that as far as the slot position goes, because we've already had our vote. So, that, that was included in that. That being said, we stand ready to answer any other questions that you might have or comments.
Counsel, do you have any questions for Ashley or Carol? Everybody good?
Good job.
Good? Nice job. Oh, go ahead.
Just quickly, on the fracking, it passed, but what exactly passed?
Well, it didn't pass, because, the, the House, the House bill...
The House, right, I'm just curious.
The House bill passed, yes, and what they were trying to do, they had started negotiating it considerably at the point where it did pass, because of the fact that they were running up against a lot of opposition, actually. Most of it, the testimony that was being received, there was a lot of opposition to that. I think what they really were trying to get at, at that particular juncture, was they were trying to get at, let's find a way to regulate this.
Study.
And study it, and, yeah, they did get down to the, you know, when you get down to the study part, when you start negotiating stuff to get the study part, you know that there's a lot of, a lot of contention in that bill, when they start amending it, so it's just a study, and that's pretty much where they were headed, that, that, towards the end. And that's why I think that they got some legs on it to be able to even pass it. That, plus the fact that the House sponsor, I'm not sure about the Senate sponsor, but I know the House sponsor, I think this was his third year, and usually by the third year of, of trying to work some legislation, you'll And usually by the third year of trying to work some legislation, you'll start to wear people down a little bit in being able to pass something that you need.
And that's what happened with the local preference bill. I believe this was the third year that was run as well, and it was the construction builders' top priority, that local preference. So, the proponents of that bill, it was their number one top must-pass bill. So, and like Carol said, after three years, it might have even been four, it was, I think, at least three, you start wearing down and amending and amending and amending, and then it's kind of gets hard.
You take some of the objection out of it by that point.
Right.
All right. Any other questions? All good? Thank you very much, nicely done.
Thanks, everybody.
Absolutely, good to see you all, happy 4th.
Happy 4th to you too.
Thank you.
Okay, we're on to the consent agenda. Counsel, take a look at the consent agenda, we have items A through E. And is there anything on there that you would like to pull, or are we all okay with everything?
Move to approve.
Just pull C for discussion.
We're going to pull C for discussion, and then there's a motion to approve the remainder?
Yeah.
Second? Motion to second to approve everything but C, any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Slacta?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Longheart?
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh?
Aye.
Okay, item C.
Very quickly, I wanted to thank City Manager Schwing again, and, you know, a lot of things are going on around this area where we need to protect to make sure that we have the professional staff in place, that we do, and that we keep them as long as we possibly can. He's done a great job of providing internal developmental opportunities for people who are genuinely ready to move. And I really appreciate, she's not here tonight, but Meg's work with creating a salary structure that fits that sort of approach. So, when I looked at where people ended up in the mid, in the range of salaries, it's just exactly where those professionals ought to be. So, I just wanted to say thank you to the city staff for the great job they did on getting our people up and running. Thank you.
And I'll move to approve item C.
We have motion to approve item C, is there a second?
I'll second it.
There's a second and discussion. And go ahead.
And I want to echo what Steve said, and Carl, it's a fantastic job, I mean, one look at it and it wasn't, it was a no-brainer, and you actually saved money. So, thank you for the beautiful balance sheet, and the staff deserve it. Thank you.
Bill?
There's a second.
Okay. You're good. Anyone else, comments? No? Roll call.
Councilman Slacta?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Longheart?
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh?
Aye.
Okay, we are to item 8, first reading and public hearing of the following ordinances. Audrey, you are on.
Thank you. The first ordinance is an amendment to Benita Springs Land Development Code, Chapter 2, Article 6, Division 2, amending Sections 2-190 and 2-191 relating to road impact fees, providing for conflicts of law, severability, codification, scrivener's errors, inclusion in code, and effective date. This is the first reading of a land use ordinance, consequently, public comment is taken at this time. The ordinance is scheduled for a second and final public reading on July 15, 2015, at 9:00 AM in these chambers. I've reviewed the affidavit of publication, and it is legally sufficient. The change is twofold, one is just a minor change to talk about the fact that we're now using our comp plan and not Lee County's on page 1, which is a minor correction to Section 2-190. And then on page 3, 2 and 3, it is revising the definition of capital improvement, similar to what Lee County did, to have both for your regular road construction or other alternative transportation system projects. In the past, we've had projects where if it was performed in conjunction of a road, it would be permissible, but when it's not done, when the element is not done in conjunction of a road project, it would not be permissible use of impact fee revenue. This allows, as long as it increases the capacity of existing transportation, it's allowable.
Okay, good. Counsel, do you have any questions before we go to public comment? Questions? No? Any member of the public wishing to speak to this ordinance and this ordinance alone, please come forward. Seeing none, we'll close public comment. And Counsel, what's your pleasure?
Move to second reading.
We have a motion to move to second reading, is there a second?
Second.
And a second, any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Longheart?
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh?
Aye.
Okay, and we have item B.
The next is an amendment to Benita Springs Land Development Code, Chapter 3, amending Section 3-391 related to fire safety, to require additional fire protection features for zero lot line construction, providing for conflicts of law, severability, codification, scrivener's errors, inclusion in code, and effective date. This is the first reading, I've reviewed the affidavit of publication, and it is legally sufficient. The second reading and public hearing will be held on July 15, 2015, 9:00 AM in these chambers. If you have any questions, as we've discussed this amendment in the past, I'll be happy to talk if Counsel has any questions, or the fire district is here also, if you have any questions.
Counsel, do you have any questions before we go to public comment?
Yeah. I just had a main question about the 20-foot rule, if the median is really playing a big factor in that on the old 41 development, and if it wasn't there, is it triggering this?
Yes, that's true, the way the code reads, we're not able to get there because they access the 20-foot rule, yes.
So, would that, say, make the road unsafe, having less than 20 foot?
No, it's not making it unsafe. The code reads that fire department access is a minimum 20-foot wide. And also says where we're not able to provide that, we can ask for additional fire protection features, and that's what we're doing. We've got, we worked with the city and so forth and redesigned the road to get the medians where we could drive on them, changing the landscaping, changing the curbs and all that, so it's suitable that we can actually get our trucks there. But we're asking for additional fire protection features for those types of buildings.
If the median, say, were not there, would you need those extra fire protection?
We wouldn't, we would just apply the code as it's wrote for those types of buildings, for those occupancies, not for the additional features, no.
And what about EMS response? I know you can drive over the medians, but say they're trying to transport somebody, that, you know, might not be good to be driving over a bumpy median.
Good evening, gentlemen and ladies. I would say that anytime you use any kind of traffic calming devices, whether it be a stop sign, a stoplight, or anything like that, it's obviously going to do what it's intended to do, which would be slow traffic, either emergency traffic or non-emergency traffic. However, we would continue to respond in the same manner we do now, and it would affect the transport the same as it would affect regular traffic.
And so, you don't see the medians being an issue as far as transporting EMS, or?
No, I do not.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, I have a question about your 20 feet, come on up there, about the, not done with you yet, pal.
Sir, can I add one more thing?
Yeah, go ahead.
Audrey brought it to my attention, which is correct. Every building that we look there, like for instance, if it's zero lot line because you're moving it closer to the lights and things like that, it's not just a street where we don't have access, it could be the sides also. So, that's, I want to clarify that.
Yeah, in other words, if there's zero setback and they're up against each other, they're going to have to do this.
Yeah.
But they already have to do it, don't they?
Yes.
We're just putting this in our code so that the people who apply for permit know that you're going to make them do that.
Right, because underneath the Florida statute, the Florida Statute of Fire Prevention Code is, yes, I can make this happen, whether it's in the ordinance or not, I just want to see it there, that way, there's no questions asked, they know upfront when it's coming.
So really, that when we start putting buildings right up against each other, zero setback, that makes it more dangerous because fire can go from one building to the next to the next. So you want these other provisions in there.
That's correct.
And, but at the same time, if it was a standalone building and you couldn't get your fire truck up to it, you would want that additional in there as well, even if it wasn't zero line, right? So that's where it gets mixed up there a little bit.
The example is, existing buildings on Old 41 already have that, we can get our trucks through them and everything. Once we start congesting the buildings together, zero lot lines, closer to the roads and all that, makes it more difficult to get a truck to place where we need it.
And then, let me ask you further on to that, if for some reason, let's say there's a standalone new building that goes up, and there's a median there, but however, they have a parking lot that will allow you to pull in there and put your route riggers out?
Well, that depends, because we don't really know where the fire is all the time in the building, it could be on the other side.
So you have to get 20-foot access all the way around the building?
We have to get access to that building, yes.
So if there's not 20-foot of access all the way around the building, then that triggers the regulation as well?
There's another provision of the code that talks about being able to stretch our hose lines off the truck to reach 150-foot around the building, or if the building's sprinkled 450-foot.
Okay.
If we're able to do that, that takes in another different consideration.
Okay, but do you have to be able to drive a truck, the 20-foot access, all the way around the building? You don't have to be able to do that, right?
No, you don't have to do that, but I mean, you have to get access to that building.
At least one side of the building.
Yes, that's correct.
So if at least one side of the building has a 20-foot place where your truck can get to, that would, it wouldn't apply, if it is not zero lot line. Is that true?
I'm not going to say that until I see it on the plan, I'll say it that way.
That's what I was looking for right there, thank you. No, I understand that, and you're right, it is sufficiently more complex than just, it's the median. There's a lot to look at for your plans. And there's a lot of different ways that a builder could comply with the law to where they could satisfy the regulation, probably, right?
Right, there's other things also in consideration too, once you do residential three units or more, they got to be sprinkled anyway.
There you go.
Once you go three stories or more, you have to sprinkle the building. Four more stories now in new code, got to have Class 1 stand pipes. So there's certain things you have to do.
To keep people safe.
Right.
Good.
Another example I give is that a single-story building, Mercantile, the Dollar General, and Old 41, is not sprinkled in Benita Springs. Other areas of Lee County where we build that, they have to sprinkle it because there's not enough fire flow. Here in Benita, we have the fire flow to protect the building.
There you go.
So, I mean, it's certain things.
Got that. Thank you very much. Any more, any other questions? Yes?
Just a couple of things that came up in one of the public meetings, and it was existing buildings, existing businesses, existing buildings do not have to change from where they are today.
No, unless they do changes to the building.
That's fine, thank you. And just to make sure that we talked this through completely, when you look at the design of the new roadway downtown, somewhere around 80% of it is road level median, so it's not going to be that you can't get across the businesses with the exception of roundabouts and that sort of thing, otherwise, you've got the building to cross side to side, is that?
That's how we asked to have it designed and everything.
Okay, that's fine, thank you.
Originally, when we first saw it, it was D-curves and...
Right, and now it's road level, thank you.
In some areas, but yes.
Good. All right. Any other questions before we go to public comment? All right, thank you very much, thank you. Anybody at, anybody, sorry. Any member of the public wishing to speak this time on this ordinance and this ordinance alone, please come forward. Seeing none, Counsel, what's your pleasure?
Move to approve.
Motion to approve, second, right?
Yep.
Motion and second, any other discussion? Roll call.
Councilman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Longheart?
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilman Slacta?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye. Okay, item C. Audrey?
Thank you. The third ordinance, land use ordinance that we're going through first readings with, is an amendment to Benita Springs Land Development Code, Chapter 4, amending Section 4-1380 relating to required approvals for excavation activities to prohibit well stimulation, providing for conflicts of law, severability, codification, scrivener's errors, inclusion in code, and effective date. This is the first reading of the ordinance, public comment is taken at this time since it's a land use ordinance. I have reviewed the affidavit of publication, and it is legally sufficient. If Counsel goes forward, the ordinance will be scheduled for a second reading and public hearing on July 15, 2015, at 9:00 AM in these chambers. Before we go to public comment, I want to point out that in the past year, year and a half, Counsel had the Water Strategy Task Force. And the Water Strategy Task Force provided miscellaneous number four recommendation, which City Council later adopted by Resolution 15-24 of City Council, when they accepted the Water Strategy recommendations, and this was unanimously passed by City Council, that the City Council of the City of Benita Springs should authorize staff to investigate possible restrictions to any oil exploration, oil production, fracking, and our fracking-like activities within the City of Benita Springs. I wanted to raise that point because it's not discussed in the green sheet or in the whereas clauses in the ordinance, I may be adding that to it if the Counsel goes forward. I will tell you, I was of the position that prior to seeing the Wallach versus Town of Dryden case, and Counsel will recall, I created a scheme that would not be in the zoning ordinance, but a separate one, consistent with following Florida Statute, Section 377.24, which requires local authorization for any type of gas or oil exploration. As it's now stated in the green sheet, and this part is correct, once the Conservancy of Southwest Florida, Mr. Brooks provided me with a copy of Wallach versus Town of Dryden, the New York case, which did find that municipalities had the authority, using their zoning authority, to outright ban certain activities, including hydro fracking. I took that clause, and understand, in New York, it's also a regulatory scheme. I have reviewed all of Chapter 377, which deals with oil and gas exploration, it does require a consent beforehand for any type of oil or gas exploration. And I also want to point out that we did have a provision in our section of our ordinance. Now, this predates Burt Harris, this section was something that we received from Lee County that basically says, "No oil or gas exploration wells may be used for or converted to production wells prior to application for or approval of another special exception in accordance with the procedure set forth in this chapter." And then the first prong before that, and I apologize, I went to the second one first, is that no oil or gas wells may be commenced prior to application for and approval of a special exception in accordance with the procedure set forth in the zoning ordinance. With this being said, this has been our process for any type of gas and oil exploration. The outright prohibition would be limited to well stimulation if Counsel goes forward. Of course, I have read the letter sent by Mr. Weaver, along with the additional attachments provided by Mr. Weaver. I think this is a matter of policy by Counsel, I can agree on both sides. So Counsel, I'm going to leave it up to you as to a risk assessment, as to how you wish to go forward, but I wanted to preface this ordinance with these points in mind.
Okay.
With that, if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer, if not, go to public comment.
Thank you very much. Counsel, do you have any questions for our counselor or staff, or do you have any comments before we go, before I shut the lights off? Everybody, hold hands. Come on. Peter, quit it.
I'm scared.
Sorry, 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 sorry. Really didn't touch me. Did you?
I don't think so.
Okay.
If I did, you'd know it.
All right, I forgot, where were we? Oh! All right, all right, all right, come on, come on, come on. You got me.
Oh, God.
All right, all right, all right, you're right, I would. All right, anyway, public comment. Would anyone, I don't know if anyone wants to follow that. It's lucky it's not dark. Anyone wishing to speak at this time on this particular matter, will open public comment, please come forward.
That was funny.
It's all right, don't be bashful.
That was your turn.
Okay, fine, I'll give it to her first.
Ladies first, Mr. Secker. Thank you.
She's so bashful.
Jennifer Hacker, on behalf of the Conservancy of Southwest Florida and our more than 6,000 members here. The Conservancy of Southwest Florida is here tonight in its full support, giving you our full support, to Bonita Springs and exercising its legal authorities to prevent the risky, the use of risky and proven well stimulation treatments in its jurisdictional limits. The state of Florida presently does have outdated oil and gas laws that do not regulate the use of fracking and fracking-like oil well stimulation treatments that involve the use of large amounts of fresh water and many dangerous chemicals, including known carcinogens. Right now, drillers only have to obtain a permit for conventional drilling project, and then legally, they have to notify the state when they want to use hydraulic or acid fracking or acid stimulation at that well site after they already have the permit in hand. Once notified, the state has no review process by which it can recommend changes or deny the driller if it believes that what is being proposed is unsafe. In recognition of this, multiple pieces of legislation were introduced in 2015, including some to ban the practice altogether statewide, some to regulate the practice, and some to deal with the trade secret issue of what information is shared to local governments and the public about these activities. All of those bills did not pass. In the prior two years, there were no bills that were introduced to regulate the use of these techniques, only to deal with the trade secrets. I wanted to make sure to clarify that, because this past year was the first year that actually sought to try to regulate these new techniques. The draft regulatory legislation that did pass the House but not the Senate would not even require all fracking-like extraction to be regulated. It only captured a narrow subset of the operations that used over 100,000 gallons of fluid and fractured rock. So, it did not cover fracking that used less than 100,000 gallons, or any type of fracking-like extraction, like acid stimulation, that uses fracking chemicals. I worked directly on lobbying on these bills throughout session, so I'd be happy to share additional information with you about that. With virtually no state-level regulatory oversight or restriction of use of these risky well stimulation treatments, and without knowing if and when that state legislation will pass, or whether it will regulate all forms of these well stimulation treatments, it is all the more important for Bonita to move forward with using its existing authorities to prohibit, or at the very least, suspend the use of these at the local level in the interim. The ordinance would not prohibit acid cleaning of oil or water wells. The ordinance clearly states that routine well cleaning is excluded. The passage of this ordinance, therefore, would not affect the use of acidizing for the purpose of cleaning any well. Acid stimulation for oil is not like acid cleaning. If an acid cleaning job is done correctly, the fluid that is returned to the surface is saltwater. In contrast, oil well acid stimulation produces a wastewater that is, that can be hazardous and include oil, acid, chemical additives included in the injection fluids, as well as metals and radioactive materials. I have quite a bit more to say, so I don't know if you would indulge me to give me any extra time, but basically, this is a real risk. Obviously, to say that it's impossible for contamination to occur is false, because contamination has been documented in other states throughout the United States. That was even mentioned, that the EPA report has said that it isn't impossible, that there are cases that have been documented. As far as it not being able to come to the surface, there are ways for it to come to the surface. It's, it's very complicated. We can have our geologists come. All that we're asking today is that you move this forward to the second hearing, and give us the time to give you the additional information, to reach out to the other stakeholders. I think that any business or property right owner in this community should want to work with its community leaders and other stakeholders to come up with a reasonable compromise that regulates all forms of these techniques, so that we can know that if they're done, that they're done in the safest manner possible. So, that would allow us the time to explore that. So, we really urge you to move this forward to second reading. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this time, please come forward.
Again, Ralph Brooks, and I just wanted to make a few legal points. I'm sure Attorney Ron Weaver will be presenting his letter. I wanted to highlight a few points in my letter. The case that he cites as more appropriate, New Mexico, rather than New York, even in that case, they found there was no taking of oil rights there. In fact, they found in New Mexico, it was preempted by state law. As your city attorney, Audrey Vance, has stated in 377.246, there's a unique provision for municipalities. It doesn't apply to counties. But municipalities have to authorize oil wells in the city limits. That's because you're a more urban area with residences and schools, and not in a rural area like the outlying county. Now, in the case of takings, which is one of the, one of the two areas he's raising, that this is a taking of private property rights. First, in Keystone, by Two Minutes Coal, it's a U.S. Supreme Court case, they found that there was no taking of coal rights, even where there was a regulation that required they leave coal in the ground to prevent subsidence, to make sure that the land wouldn't collapse after they took the coal out. We're not requiring them to leave any oil in the ground here. They can still take the oil out using conventional techniques. If there's a little bit of oil left in that they didn't get, or if they shut the well down a little bit earlier, that's still not a taking of all their oil rights. And there really has to be a taking of all economic use to result in a constitutional taking. In another U.S. Supreme Court case, Goldblatt versus Hempstead, they upheld a town that prohibited gravel pits from mining out below the water table. They said that wasn't a taking. In this case, the city's not directly taking anyone's property rights or mineral rights, or ousting them from the property. They can still take their oil in conventional drilling, in a conventional drilling fashion. So, we feel confident that there's no ripe taking claim. In fact, in the City of Bonita Springs, to our knowledge, there has never been an application that has obtained authorization for an oil well in the last 20 years. There hasn't been any oil wells in Bonita Springs. They haven't applied for them. If they've had mineral rights, they've not exercised them or leased them out to anyone who's been a willing buyer of these lease rights. The Burt Harris Act says you have to either have an existing use, an existing oil well, or a vested application where they've come and you've told them that they can begin oil well drilling, in an actual application, or something non-speculative, a non-speculative use. I can think of nothing more speculative than an oil well. Someone comes to me and says, invest in my oil well in Bonita Springs, I would look at that with a speculative eye. I don't think that's a vested right, it's not an existing use, it's pure speculation. If someone were to bring a Burt Harris claim against you, you also have 180-day cooling-off period in which you can examine the location of that well, the specifics about what they're actually applying for. They haven't applied for anything here yet. We don't know where they want to do this well stimulation treatment using fracking chemicals, but the fact that they're here protesting against it means they want to use it. We're willing to work with them to try to get them to agree not to use it here in Bonita Springs, and we hope that you'll give us the time to work with them and work with your city attorney on coming up with an even more bulletproof ordinance that you can consider. I think that you should prohibit this and ban this while you can. The legislature is likely to grandfather in communities that already have bans in place, like they did with vacation rentals, like they did with fertilizer ordinances, like they did with the town of Yankee Town on referendum on plan amendments. They typically referendum people that have done something already. So, rely on that. Go forward. Get this thing on the books now. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this time, please come forward.
Thank you very much. Ron Weaver, 401 East Jackson Street, and our letter is already of record. Thank you very much. The, we're willing to meet and listen, and we're willing to meet and talk about issues and bring our experts, whether you individually or collectively or in a workshop. We respectfully wish that we'd been contacted earlier, and we don't believe that the mineral rights owners themselves radically noticed. We also do not believe that the legislature would ignore the key issues. They meet in early session. Committees meet again in September, right around the corner. Number three, we believe that the combination of, of these definitions, and the combination of these prohibitions do affect...
Ron, look what you did. Oh, hey, there you're back.
We'll take that as a positive message, and thank you very much. But there's no need for this...
Generally, that's not positive.
There's no real need for this regulation. The oil is 12,000 feet deep. And this is the geology, as you can tell by these effects, this is the geology about which there's a genuine advantage to this geology with respect to those 12,000 feet, and with respect to those seven natural impermeable levels. We are willing to meet and discuss these issues. There's a mention here of a case called Dryden in New York, in which it was allegedly the right of the local government to act on the subject. There's a contrary case called Sweppy, in which the federal court said just the opposite in New Mexico, that this interferes locally. Four cities in four different states, including Colorado, Texas, New Mexico, and Ohio, have had to abolish after four months in existence their local bans because they contradicted the state law, and there's no grandfathering for you to try to get ahead of a state law that's already been passed by the House under the red flag doctrine, which is a local case. Number four, with respect to where this is going in the courts, there is, there are two Burt Harris problems here. Number one, it's unfair and unreasonable, which is the violation of the first part of Burt Harris Act. And number two is, the second independent right of recovery under the Burt Harris Act is you bear disproportionately a burden that ought to be borne by the public at large. If you want to get rid of the ability to frack, then you have to pay those who are the victims thereof, and assess it among all the members and all the taxpayers. The taxpayers will also be footing the bill for the expense of defending suits, and then the state legislature will come along and deal with the issue responsibly with its scientists. You do not yet have any scientists who have brought forth any such threat through those seven natural impermeable layers to the 12,000 feet below oil. Finally, I'll conclude with this. The state law prohibits the waste of energy. 377.24, 377.19 say thou shalt not waste thy energy in pools, I quote, pools, where they can be recovered, which obviously deals with the pools of oil 12,000 feet deep, which are present in tens of millions of dollars' worth of damages at least, plus hundreds of other victims who may not be here yet, but who have not been adequately noticed because they may be mineral rights owners, instead of surface right owners who may or may not have gotten some notices, but we did not. We've been looking all over the place for Collier Enterprises and Varian Collier Resources to find somebody who got this notice. They didn't. Therefore, we believe that this is inadequate notice, this is a violation of due process. We are willing to meet and talk with our experts. We believe it is a violation of seven different laws, and I'll summarize what they are. Number one, due process, inadequate notice, a violation of the private property rights of the Burt Harris Act in two particulars, unfair and unreasonable inordinate burden, and a bearing of a disproportionate burden that ought to be borne by the public at large, inverse condemnation, a federal taking under the Fifth and Fourteenth Amendments to the Federal Constitution of property without compensation, of what the U.S. Supreme Court has acknowledged in 1922, is an independent insular property right, which you're taking all of, not just part of the property value, you're taking all of the mineral rights value and its extractability 12,000 feet down, because this stops fluid injection. You use fluid injection in all conventional, regardless of what you've heard from folks who have not yet brought scientists. We have scientists available. We'll bring more scientists if you like. We will meet, we will talk to you. I see the light flashing. I'll conclude with this. The nature of this overbroad regulation, preventing by admission by Ms. Hacker on page two, paragraph four of her letter of today, July 1, acknowledges the prohibition of well stimulation with injection fluids. It's not just a cleaning of, it's an issue of injection is used in conventional oil. Fluids are used in conventional oil. Therefore, it is overbroad. It is a prohibition which we respectfully request that you not approve, and that you please let us meet with you, if necessary, to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this time, please come forward. All right, seeing none. Council? I'd just like to interject, first of all, well done, and everybody's part here. When it comes to zoning regulations, though, it is kind of what we do for a living. And, and, boy, thank God we weren't trying to prohibit dogs in restaurants for something really important, or we'd be really big trouble. My point being is that there are a lot of times that, that we prohibit particular uses, counties, cities, municipalities, all the time. I mean, West Palm Beach, you cannot put in a car parking lot, new, used, anything. Particularly, there's a whole industry, psh, no, you can't do it. Can't do it by right, can't do it by anything. So, it's not, this is not, this is my argument, this is an illegal argument, this is just what, what I know that we've done in the past, and that what we do kind of like as a city. The constituency that we have, they, they call upon us to protect them from a threat, real or imagined. You know, sometimes it's, I don't want to see dogs in restaurants. It may be an imagined threat. I love dogs, I'm gonna take mine there. But people may think that it's something bad, and we react in that way. So, I, I think we should go ahead. My personal preference is that we move forward with this. I, I believe I'm a scientific person. The gentleman may be exactly right about the science behind this and it not being of any danger, but then again, I think we should go through this process and go ahead and see how it washes out, so to speak, with or without the assistance of some other force behind it. So, council, what's your pleasure?
Just a couple of quick comments.
Go ahead.
The contentiousness and the emotion around DRGR, where we have obvious science, created enough problem for us. When we go forward with something where we don't have proven science, I think we're probably opening ourselves to more problems. So, I'd err on the side of, of being careful with the citizens of the city. But on a broader scale, you know, when it, when it comes, I'm not even sure we're asking the right question. For me, the right question is, for we, the people, have we, are we moving forward to creating an independence, uh, uh, energy independence in this country? Is this helping? But even maybe more importantly, are we, are we doing something to reduce fossil-based fuel use? And I don't think we are. So, I think we need to make sure that we're very careful about moving forward on this thing, and I'd err on the side of, of saying, let's, let's be more careful and not move forward in an imprudent manner. So, I would make the motion that we can consider the, the, the ordinance as it reads today and move forward.
Move forward? To first, is that a motion to go to first?
It is.
Second? Second reading?
Second reading, yes, please.
Is there a second? I'll second that. Any other discussion? Okay, no discussion. I guess we'll go to roll call. Then, there is a motion to proceed to second reading, and a second? Roll call.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Longheart?
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilman Slacto?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilman Simmons?
Aye.
Okay, and we move to second reading. Oh, let's see, here we go. What's next there, Audrey? What do you got?
Okay, next I have a zoning ordinance of the City of Bonita Springs, Florida, considering a request to amend a portion of the Burkhardt Commercial Plan Development CPD established in Lee County, zoning resolution number 96042, amending parcels ENF to allow a senior housing facility on land located 24080 South Tammy Mee Trail and 3440 and 3333 Renaissance Boulevard, Bonita Springs, Florida, 34134, on 17.41 more or less acres, providing for an effective date. This is a first reading. No public comment is taken tonight on this ordinance. The ordinance is scheduled for July 15, which is a city council meeting, not your normal July 13, the Wednesday during that meeting at, starting at nine a.m.
Okay, council, what do you'd like to do? Move it to...
Move second.
Okay. Let's see, move to second reading?
Yes.
All right. And there's our second?
Second.
Motion to second. Any other discussion? Roll call.
Councilman Longheart?
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilman Slacto?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Okay, and item 10.
Thank you. We have a continuation of the June 15, 2015, public hearing to consider adoption of the following zoning ordinance. I'm going to read the title block into the record, although I did read it on June 15. And this is a zoning ordinance of the City of Bonita Springs, Florida, considering a request to rezone 1.07 acres of land from commercial C1A to commercial plan development CPD to allow a car wash facility on land located at 27731 South Tammy Mee Trail, Bonita Springs, Florida, 34134, providing for an effective date. At the June 15 zoning hearing, we became perilously close to losing our quorum. As a result, we did, the applicant and staff jointly discussed in front of city council and said, let's continue the case, and it was decided to continue it for tonight. At this point, Ms. Genson has provided her initial presentation. Ms. Montgomery was in a portion of her presentation. As I understand, she's going to give a three-minute or so introduction, finish up with Mr. Warjack, and she has one additional witness after that, at which point Jackie can then provide any comments. I don't believe we have any participants of record here, but this is limited, it's a zoning ordinance, limited to the participants. Ms. Montgomery?
Thank you. For the record, Neil Montgomery, I just want to do a brief recap of what transpired. One, I want to remind you that the planning board did recommend approval. Two, I want to kind of remind you of some of the things that the staff and the applicant agree on. One, the staff and the applicant agree that this use is compatible with the surrounding uses, in particular, the boat parts, the tuffey, the auto zone, auto parts, and those uses. Thirdly, the staff and the applicant agree that this request is consistent with your comprehensive plan. The area of general commercial, this is a commercial use, and it's consistent, and the property would have to be developed with a commercial use. The staff did point out that you did some changes to your ordinance, and that we have to be approved as a plan development. We agree that that's true. That ordinance also requires upgraded landscaping and upgraded architecture. And when we last met, maybe perhaps for too long, but we did share with you the details about the upgraded architecture, which the staff has signed off on, and the upgraded landscaping. Councilman Gibson, you asked for the mule graphs to be changed to cocoa plum. Audrey was vigilant, and so the current version of the draft ordinance that you have includes that change. So, there's agreement on the landscaping. You will hear briefly about noise here in a minute. You will hear briefly about noise here in a minute. We also agree that your code requires that when you have a lot that's not big enough to meet the connection separation for driveways, that we have to share a driveway, and we are sharing a driveway. Your ordinance also says we have to have a cross-access easement with a neighbor with whom we're sharing the driveway, and we do. Mr. Arnold's here, he represents the property owner with whom we have a cross-access easement. So, we agree on that. There is no requirement in your code for the distance that that shared driveway must go back into the property. There is another provision of that same section of the code, 3-291, that says if you have a road, an access road, that's parallel to the main road, where it connects, that road has to be back 100 feet. The testimony of, the sworn testimony of staff at the planning board was that that particular section of the code relative to access road does not apply to this property. This is a driveway, a shared access, and we meet the code in that regard. But that is the issue, because what's happening is, the issue in a nutshell, is the staff wants to apply the requirements to apply to access roads to a shared driveway, and it does not apply, and Mr. Voidock is going to be here to explain that more fully. I would also note that FDOT has issued a notice of intent, it is their road, they review it for safety standards, and they have found that our shared driveway and cross-access easement are safe and consistent with FDOT's rules.
I'm sorry, what'd you say? Just kidding.
Good evening, my name is Sarah Mayer, I'm with Geosonics, I'm here to speak about noise, which I understand may have already been presented to you. I would like to go through the slides again, if you'll bear with me, and if you have any questions, at the end I'll be happy to answer questions. On May 18th, we measured ambient noise levels at two locations adjacent to the proposed car wash site, here to the north and here to the south. The northern location was selected because it was the closest accessible point to the actual north property line. The location to the south was selected in order to measure existing noise levels at the adjacent residential community here. The next slide. At both locations, the average noise level was 59 dB, and the maximum noise level measured was 79 dB. City limits noise based off of the way that the property is zoned. For commercially zoned property, the limit is 72 dB, which as I've indicated is exceeded by existing traffic noise level at times. Car wash, in order to evaluate that, we've, pardon me, we've studied the noise that would be produced by the equipment involved in it. We've assessed the maximum noise level, which would be produced by the dryers at the end of the wash tunnel. Wash tunnel's located, if you'll, beyond the northern side of the property here. It's open to the west, it's open to the existing highway. They're located within the building, there's walls to the north and the south, which will aid in noise reduction. The product specifications for these dryers listed maximum noise at a distance of 9.6 feet to be 83.8 dB. That's the specifications for the equipment. When it's installed inside the building, those walls will aid in noise reduction. Outside the building, noise levels would be between 70 and 73. There's an additional distance from that northern wall to the northern property line, and if you assess a 3 decibel reduction with the doubling of distance, noise levels at the northern property line would be within compliance with the 72 decibel limit. The secondary noise concern is the canister vacuums, which will be located towards the center of the property. Product specifications for these canister vacuums list that the maximum noise level to be 79 dB at a distance of 4 feet. Those canisters are approximately 50 feet from their southern property line, which is the closest property line. And again, if you consider a 3 decibel reduction with the doubling of distance from 4 feet, the noise level at the southern property line would be 69 dB, which is in compliance with the city code. And again, also lower than the existing noise levels from traffic. Conclusions from the collected noise data from this location, as well as reviewed product specifications. Noise levels at both the north and the south property line would be within compliance with code for noise limit. Maximum noise level measured at the northern monitoring location was 70.8 dB. Maximum noise level measured at the southern monitoring location was 78.9 dB. With traffic being at these levels and the previously stated noise levels at the north and the south property lines being within compliance below 72, we believe that traffic and existing noise levels will obscure the noise from the dryer and the vacuums. Also, with additional concern of nearby residential being over 370 feet further away, with the reduction of noise with distance, it would still be within compliance. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. Anyone have any questions? All right, thank you very much.
Good evening this time.
Good evening.
For the record, John Voidock with the Lisi Fitzgerald, the civil engineer on the project. Just to add to Katie's testimony, the noise ordinance regulates noise to 10:00 p.m., our proposed hours of operation are 8:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. As Neil said, the main issue is our access. I'll just briefly touch on, you know, run through the testimony I would have at our previous meeting. Drainage, we are accommodating the off-site flows from the pond in front of the hotel. We're basically extending this cross-section that's behind the lockup. We're mirroring that section here, and the, you know, adjacent properties as they develop would basically create the same section to allow that flow to continue to the north. And we do have our, our South Florida Water Management District and Army Corps of Engineer permits have been issued. The stormwater management, as I mentioned, our ERP is approved. The site utilizes a dry retention-detention system, and I did want to highlight on here that we are consistent with the comp plan policies related to additional water quality. We provide an additional 50% water quality treatment, and we have also done nutrient removal calculations and have a retention volume such that our nutrient loading does not exceed existing conditions. So, the main issue is the access, as Neil explained, and I just wanted to kind of highlight the site circulation for the proposed use. We have a driveway located at the edge of our, at the southern edge of our property, which leads directly into the stacking lane for the car wash, and you proceed around in a counterclockwise direction. This is the pay station. You would then enter the wash. The wash is automatic, you drive onto the conveyor, it pulls you through, washes your car. You exit the facility to the west, and then you loop around, this is the vacuum facilities here, and then you loop back around to exit the site where you would proceed out of our driveway. Staff did require that we share our access, which is also an FDOT requirement. And basically, what we did was design that to line up with our proposed exit, such that in the, if and when the neighboring property develops, you could either exit our site out on the 41 or continue straight across and truly cross-access the adjacent property. And then this median was revised to allow them the exit movement on the 41 or the ability to enter our facility and obtain a car wash. As Neil mentioned, we have received our notice of intent from FDOT, this was received last As Neil mentioned, staff has requested 100 feet as a preference, because it is not required by code. This is an example that was provided by staff of a way that that could be met. Granted, there are other solutions that could be had, but basically, if you force 100 feet on the driveway connection to the south, it creates an offset intersection, it adds conflict points, and it does not allow the intent of cross-access where basically our site would not be able to safely enter the adjacent property. As Neil mentioned, the code section originally referenced related to access roads is for something like this, which is to our south, on the opposite side of 41. This is an access road, you can see that there are access points into parking lots, but this is an actual road that provides access, there's no backout parking, you're not cutting through multiple properties, and then this separation is the 100-foot requirement for access roads. This is not applicable to our driveway. Another item raised by staff was that there was efforts in the works to create driveway connections, interconnections to the properties to our south, and that they met the 100-foot separation. As you can see, this is the CVS, their parking aisle's about 87 feet, and then there's a, this would need to be opened up here, this connection here would be at 75 feet, and then where the signal is at the discount auto parts is about 65, 70 feet. And the point of this exhibit is, when you have a shared driveway and cross-access, you do it where it makes sense and is safe for each of the two properties, which is exactly what we've done. This is a code section, but at that point, does anybody have any questions related to that?
Counsel, you have any questions for the gentleman? Anything? Nope? Think they're good for now. All right. Neil, you have anyone else?
No, we have, no, sir, we have, we have our witnesses all here, we do have Ted Tree, who, if I let him testify, would tell you the road functions at level service B, you know, after we're developed, so there's not a traffic problem. All the folks who were here before are here now to answer any questions, so if you have architectural questions or anything else, otherwise we're here to, you know, respond to anything that Mr. Arnold or the staff may say.
Why don't we go ahead and have the staff presentation, and then if we have any questions, we can call you up, okay? All right? All right. Hey, Jackie.
Good evening, for the record, Jaclyn Genson.
Do you need the PowerPoint?
Actually, I already had my presentation done at the council meeting last time, so I do have some backup slides if I need to pull them up, but I'm just going to use this opportunity to provide some rebuttal, if I may. In terms of compatibility, yes, it is consistent with the comprehensive plan, but there was some concern with staff in terms of how this, the findings affect for the land development code for us to grant a recommendation of approval if they really met that test, and there's, there's about 10 indicators or findings that staff has to make, and one of the comments is, or one of the indicators is, is this consistent with existing and planned uses? The applicant referred to a lot of existing uses that are along this corridor and provided some examples and pictures, and yes, they're existing, but a lot of them are legal, non-conforming uses that, as a result of the amendments that city council passed within the past year and a half, those aren't uses that the city council wants to see along that corridor anymore by right, or they had code minimum landscaping requirements, or they had no landscaping requirements. To say, so to say, yes, they're compatible with existing uses to an extent, but you've got to understand the bigger picture. So, I just wanted to bring that up. Staff was concerned as, this is an auto-centric use, and with the economic development efforts that we are having for businesses along US 41 and Benita Beach Road, is this really a use that you want to see along this corridor? So, it's really a policy recommendation that we're looking for some guidance from city council on, so if you feel that this is a use that you want planned along this corridor, then that's fine, but that's where staff would like some, for some direction, and that's one of the reasons why we recommended denial of this use, is because we're not really sure if this is a use that you really want to see along this corridor to perpetuate auto-centric uses. Regarding the, the site interconnection, yes, the applicant is right, I technically cannot hand, make that, the developer adhere to that section of the code, but the way that driveway functions and the way that the sites interconnect, staff feels it is a safer condition for them to meet that 100-foot outer separation. In regards to connecting all the streets to the, sorry, all the properties to the south through interconnections, I don't believe staff ever said that the existing driveway conditions met that 100 feet, but we are making an effort to connect, and any new project that wants to interconnect to the north should meet that 100-foot separation just to create a safer condition for the cars to exit and whatnot, and have more ability to stack. In regards to the example where staff was really trying to work with the applicant to meet that 100 feet, yes, the example that we gave them had some multiple conflicts, but again, we said, this is a suggestion, come talk with staff. They never came and talked with us. So, I just don't think that's a fair representation of staff. Unfortunately, our city engineer is still out on leave right now, he will be back hopefully next week, so the only testimony I have for you to review is whatever was in the staff report and contained in the minutes. The transcripts would be more indicative of what he actually provided with testimony, but he felt it was a safer condition for the applicant to meet the 100 feet, and it would entail moving some of their sites around, maybe taking out a few vacuum stalls, but again, we just thought it was a safer condition with the 100 feet. In regards to FDOT, they don't regulate internal site circulation, so they couldn't even comment on that, but they were concerned with the flow, and obviously, they have worked with the applicant to where they're comfortable, but they don't regulate internal site circulation, it's a local issue. For architectural, they made, in their presentation at the first hearing, that it exceeds architectural standards, but do remember, we did pass some amendments to chapter three that requires additional architectural features on other secondary facades. So, yes, they may have primary facade standards on each side, but just remember, we did pass some amendments back a few months ago that requires all projects to have additional enhanced features. So, those are just some of the issues I wanted to go ahead and share staff's position on, and I'm here, Mr. Dolmer's here, Mr. Kirby's here, if you have any questions.
I've got one right out of the gate here about the architectural features. Let there be light. So, let it be written, so that's a most important thing I want to do tonight. Oh, hi.
Hi.
The, the architectural features you're talking about, will that be, would, if approved, that would be done at the land development code or the permitting, was, when you do that? We're not approving the actual architectural features.
We actually are, because they did need some deviations from land development code.
Right.
And this application came in 2014, so they've worked with Sam Vincent on some of those deviations that they would need. The way we have amended the code just a few months ago is that administrative deviations can be granted through the local development order process, but the applicant went ahead and did those now. They didn't have to do it at this stage, but they went ahead and did it because, number one, it's one of those triggered uses along the corridor, so we wanted city council to see exactly what they were getting.
Right.
So, that's why they got into this level of detail at this stage. Typically, it's not done, but when you have projects like this, you typically want to see elevations or renderings, so you know what you're doing.
So, I'm a little confused, or, or, are you, is, are you satisfied with the architectural standards that they have implemented?
The city architect has approved those elevations.
I beg your pardon?
The city architect has approved those elevations.
Okay, good, okay. All right, any other questions, counsel? For staff or anyone else? Mike, go ahead, Dave in there.
I guess, why a car wash? You know, being as it's one of the things that we prohibited, why are they asking to put a car wash there?
Mike, you didn't.
Well, they're not prohibited, by the way, right?
Car washes along the Benita Beach Road corridor and the US 41 corridor are only permitted by special exception or planned development. However, their, their zoning as it stands today is C1A commercial, and yes, it's an older zoning designation left over by Lee County, but it does not permit car washes by right.
Yeah, but there's, I don't want anybody to be confused, we're not, we wouldn't be permitting something that's prohibited, it's not a prohibited use, a prohibited use can't be done.
It's not prohibited.
But this can be done by special exception, so that's why it's here.
Or planned development.
Yeah, whether you approve it or not, that's why it's here.
Yeah, well, I mean, basically, I'm just asking, you know.
I'll defer to the applicant.
Yeah, it's not a prohibited use, I have to concur with the mayor, we have to go through a different process, we had to either be a special exception or a planned development, and the reason for that was so we could go to the level of detail that we have done with the architecture and the landscaping, because as Jackie's pointed out, you have a lot of other uses in the area that aren't necessarily, don't meet your architectural standards, and don't have very good landscaping or code minimum, or none at all, so what we did here was subjected and went through a series of review with your staff, with Sam Vincent, to go through the architecture to make sure it met and exceeded your architectural requirements, and so they didn't just look at the front facade like they often do, as if you'll recall from the last time, the staff reviewed all of the facades and, and went through a lot of changes in both textures, materials, and a variety of things to make sure it satisfied their concerns. And in regards to the art of landscaping, if you remember, Scott Wyndham testified, you know, we have layers of landscaping here, not just the landscaping along the borders, so that you'd have layers of different types and at different levels to buffer the building from, again, essentially from all sides. And we exceed in terms of the amount of planting on the site, the size of plantings, and everything else, so, and that has been reviewed and signed off by the staff, and if you look at the draft ordinance, it ties us to those drawings, to the architecture, and to the landscaping.
Is the property owner going to be the owner, operator of the car wash?
Yes, Mr. Levine is here, he owns the property, he's the applicant, he is going to be, you know, a part of your city, and yes, he's here and he's going to own it for the duration. Did you want to hear from him?
I wouldn't mind hearing a little bit about him.
While he's coming up, Mike, you bring up a good point about the, hi, the, the -- The, the way our code is laid out to where you do have uses by right, things that you want to see happen there. And then what we did, the reason you require some of these by special exception or through other mechanisms is because you do want to take a really hard look at them and decide whether or not it's applicable for the area, if it's a, it's a use that you want to see in the area, or whether or not, and be sure that they put special standards to it. So we put that, and, but then you do have prohibited uses too, right? I mean, there are some that we say you, you can't have it in this section, that you can't have it.
In the convention, in your conventional zoning districts, you do have uses that are prohibited, where there, there's just a dash, it's not permitted. So there, what you would do is, or what an applicant would do is rezone the property to a planned development and ask for that use.
Yeah.
That's one way to look at it.
So, but, but, I was just trying to, trying to level out that, you know, that we have, we'll say, three phases of, of fear, we'll say. Some we're not afraid of, some, eh, we're cautious of, and some that we really, like, we really hate. I think that that's pretty much to do it, you know, I just wanted to be sure everybody understands where this stands in that order, I think.
I'm on the so-so level.
Yeah, you're right there with tattoo parlors and, you know.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate that.
Get your car washed, get a tattoo, massage. Welcome.
And with that introduction, any questions for the applicant, me, Max Levine?
Okay, so tell us, tell us about your project.
What do you want to know? I mean, I've been involved in this, it's hard to say.
I think Mike asked you a really good question. Why, why did you choose this particular site, and why do you think that this is an appropriate site for?
Very clear. I mean, the number one factor you look for, and the number one and two factor you look for in the location of a car wash is the amount and nature of the automotive traffic that's going by. I think as, as our experts have testified, car washes don't tend to generate trips, particularly express car washes, which what we do, it's something you do on a pre-existing trip, so that addresses some of the traffic concerns, but also in terms of me, I'm interested in locating myself on a road where there is already a significant amount of traffic, and also where it's not, you know, traveling at full-on highway speeds, let's say, and where it is kind of, really, the, the kind of road that we're talking about at 41, where we're positioned fairly well vis-à-vis the light, we're after the light, but traffic hasn't sped up so fast, so you're really looking at the kind and nature of the traffic that's available. You're also looking at community demographics. I think Benito Springs is an excellent fit for us, both because of the demographics, because we can offer a wide variety of services at different price points, but also because there's really very little competition in terms of the, the nature of the, the wash that we're offering. Again, I'm sorry to go over this, I know many of you have heard it. It's an express car wash, so our basic services, you pay at pay stations that are automated, somebody guides you onto the conveyor, and you go through the tunnel where the exterior cleaning services occur, and then you go and vacuum out your car for free. So there really aren't that many of that kind of car wash operating in the area that we're talking about. So from a competitive standpoint, from a demographic standpoint, and from a kind of hyper-local standpoint as to where the property is vis-à-vis traffic, it's a pretty advantageous position. I will say that I have kind of an informal board of advisors that's composed of owner-operators. I would venture to say we have over 100 years of experience between them, and they're all enthused about the site location, about the site design, and about our financial projections, so.
Okay, yep. Mike, what else you got?
Well, you know, my, my main concern is we'd voted to kind of change the uses along there. We were looking for something you know, a little more upscale, a little less auto-centric, some, you know, office buildings, things like that. So I just wanted to see, you know, why you were thinking car wash, and, you know, so did you buy this property knowing you wanted to do a car wash ahead of time, or?
Yes, absolutely. This was supposed to be my first car wash. You know, we, we spent a significant amount of time and effort working with the city to accommodate. You know, again, I, I understand that as a result, you know, there was an ordinance in play to ban this use that was not adopted. The ordinance that was adopted was for enhanced landscaping and, and architectural requirements, and that's really what we spent the last year doing.
Yeah, because my main concern is the, you know, how close it is to residential area and, and the sound, and, you know, because part of that is your building's kind of narrow, running perpendicular to the road.
Sure.
So there isn't much building there to help block the road noises. I know you guys aren't, you know, liable for keeping the road noise down, but it doesn't really help at keeping the road noises from getting through there either.
No, I understand that. I, you know, obviously, I can't testify intelligently to that, but we certainly have our experts who could, who could talk about that. But, you know, I, for us, the, again, just to repeat myself, I apologize, the, the population, the nature of the traffic there, and the competitive profile really predominate in terms of location.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Yeah, Steve, go ahead.
Go ahead, Peter.
No, go ahead, go ahead.
Just real quickly, Jackie, after back and forth several weeks, would staff change its position on this?
No, we have remained with our position.
And the second question is, zoning board approved it. It's a little unusual to have staff continue with the position after zoning board says no, so.
Zoning board approved, but they also wanted the applicant and staff to adhere to the, our staff's recommendation of the 100 feet. So they didn't strike that condition. So they went ahead along with staff that, so that helps resolve one of staff's concerns in terms of providing safe interconnection for that driveway access point. But the other issue with the compatibility, it's where for city council, you know, is this a use that we want along this corridor?
So primary, primary staff's primary issue is compatibility?
Compatibility is one of the concerns, and then the safe interconnection between the properties.
Okay, thank you.
And councilman, if I could actually just speak to that point too. There is an additional concern, cars are driving on the property. It's a car wash. And from my standpoint, the proposed setback of 100 feet actually significantly impacts the internal circulation. There's basically, long story short, there's, with fewer vacuum stalls, there are going to be more cars turning around in circles looking for vacuum stalls. We, we decided to orient the internal traffic flow that way, so that nobody would kind of be forced to leave without getting what they paid for.
Sure.
But what it does mean is that with fewer vacuum stalls, which would be a necessity as far as I know with the staff's proposed access point, there's just going to be more frustration and more cars traveling on the site. You know, more trips per car. And that is a safety issue on the inside of the site, although it may not raise one in the city's property, it raises one in mine.
Right, and, and I want to thank you folks for coming back a second time, because I didn't think, I didn't think you had fair due process with the number of people we had that day. So thank you for coming back, and the presentations are well done. My, my only concern is, is compatibility of what we want here. It's not the way you've done it, it's not anything that you've done improperly. It's just what we're trying to do for the future, so thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and before I go to Peter, I want to say that, that I think staff is doing the right thing by, by sticking with their recommendation, not, not, not to recommend it. It's not, it's really not, I mean, historically, back in the good old days, when we were doing about five or six of these a day, it seemed like way back 2004, whatever. When, when staff makes a recommendation of a denial, that, there's nothing unusual about that, and that it goes contrary to the zoning or whatever, and then they'll tell you, well, if you are going to permit this, well, then here's the things that you're going to need to do. And that's the appropriate thing to do. So yeah, go ahead, Pete.
Um, I just have one question. I apologize if I missed this, but, you know, when we met initially, there, there is some wetness there. It's not certainly a high and dry piece of land, if you will, pardon the expression, and we're going to be generating a lot of water there. What, can you tell me about the water capture coupled with it being a little bit wet and damp as it is already?
Sure, I, I can tell you about the part that involves the actual operation of the car wash, how that water is disposed of. As an industry standard, car washes use less water than restaurants, and the reason is because we're extremely water-conscious. So we can reclaim up to 70% of the water that we apply to a car, and the way we do that is, if somebody more competent than me with one of those clickers can help me out. We have underground tanks that gradually filter the water out. Any chemicals that we've used, settle out of those, and then any oil that may have dripped off the cars, settle out of those. Those are removed professionally. They do not go back into the city's water system. Those are carted out and disposed of, excuse me, disposed of safely. So as far as the operational side goes, I don't think it's a contamination risk. However, I think as far as the, the pre-existing water flows, if that's what you're asking about, I think we can have one of the engineers maybe testify with regard to that.
Thank you.
That'd be great.
All right, any other questions for the least qualified guy here?
No, no.
Okay.
No, I believe, I believe that's our job, so don't be taking that.
Again, for the record, John Boydock. Councilman Simmons, if I understand your question, the site does have degraded wetlands on the property. They are nearly 100% infested with exotics. So to Councilman Gibson's point, while the proposed use doesn't necessarily block road noise with the building, if you took down the exotic vegetation, which is a city requirement, it's a county requirement, basically, if you develop private property, you have to remove all exotics and keep it that way. If you did that now and didn't develop the site, it would basically be wide open. We do have enhanced perimeter buffers on 41, on the back of the property, with additional landscaping internal to the property, which does help in noise abatement. So I couldn't testify that it'd be as good as it is now, but what's there now is exotic, and you have codes in place to get rid of it. With regard to the wetlands, it, the property is low. It is, as I said, there are degraded wetlands. There was no mitigation required for those because of their degradation. And they're, you know, isolated to our property and the two adjacent properties, one acre parcels. I think ours was about 60%. So it, these aren't good wetlands as part of a regional crew or something like that, where they're, you know, ecological benefit. They're low and filled with exotic vegetation. And with regard to the water, the runoff from the site now, you know, the groundwater is basically at the surface, so when it rains, every drop of water runs off as fast as it can. Where we're, our discharge rate is extremely limited relative to that by the Water Management District, and we're meeting all those rules related to how fast we can discharge water from the site.
Can you point out the retention area on that drawing right there, please, with your laser beam?
Retention area is actually around the perimeter here.
Okay.
And we do discharge to the FDOT right-of-way, which was part of our discussions with staff with the concerns of the historic flows in the rear of the property. We changed this and had to get approval from FDOT to discharge to the right-of-way.
Okay, all right. Any other questions, gentlemen?
Just real quick, I saw, I see Mike's gone, but are we, are you okay with the environmental question that
Yes.
that the council people brought up? Okay, thank you.
Okay, yes, Neil?
I just, you mentioned tattoo parlors and massage parlors. Actually, they're already a permitted, no joking, but they're already a permitted use. You know, and I do want to say it's the compatibility, whether they're legal non-conforming or not, you have to be compatible with the surrounding uses, and certainly with an AutoZone, a Tuffy, a tire store, a boat store. You look at all those uses, we are compatible, and I know an office would be nice, but a 1.07 acre parcel, that's not a feasible use.
Thank you very much. Okay, Audrey?
Counsel, just some housekeeping items. If you're going to discuss, I would request at this time disclosure of any ex parte communications, both with the applicant or anyone else. I do, I was present for the applicant, so I do know there's several on file with the city clerk. The other thing I wanted to point out, in addition to the landscaping that was raised a few moments ago, on page four of the draft ordinance, the applicant has requested some changes. Those changes are marked. Staff does not agree to those changes, and that relates to, one to engineering and one to cross-access. So before there's ever a final vote, if council's inclined to go forward, I would need to know those changes. Now, if council decides not to go forward, likewise, I would prepare a resolution, and I would also need findings of fact for why it was denied.
Okay, and so.
Right, the people limited to participants.
Yeah, there, there were no.
There are none.
There are none, right? Public.
Oh, yeah, Wayne Arnold.
There was?
No.
Wait, 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 wait. Is there one?
Yes, there's one.
Okay, it's Wayne, isn't it? Stick right there, hold on, hold on. Tell us again, the, the two things that, that would have to be straightened out was, one was the cross, whether or not their, their proposed cross-access agreement, or whether to do something 100 feet away. That's, that's one, right?
Correct.
Okay, what's the other one?
The one above it, which is condition eight, and I don't know if Ms. Montgomery is still. And this one, staff is objecting. The applicant wanted to change to say that the South Florida Water Management District is in compliance. Staff has not had the opportunity to review that. They review it during, during the development order stage. So staff does not want this language as modified. Staff would want
That's fine.
the original language.
That's fine.
Okay.
The, the requirement is the extra water quality. That's why John Boydock testified to that, so it's there. So if you want to review it again, that's fine.
Yep, you have to do it anyway, right? Okay, all right.
The language is on page four.
Got it. Okay, counsel, what's your pleasure? Oh, we're going to go to the public comment portion, or the Wayne portion, as we call it here.
Thank you. Good evening, mayor and council. I'm Wayne Arnold, and I represent John German, who happens to be the property owner that shares the access with the subject property you're discussing tonight. He and Mr. Levine have worked for several months and negotiated the access point. It does not achieve the 100 feet that staff is recommending, but as you heard, FDOT supports that. We think it functions for both sites. You haven't created a frontage road through here. You have other sites to the south that are access is consistent with the depths that have been provided along US 41, and we think that, as proposed, it functions safely and, and good for all of us. So I think you should compliment the owners for working together, because without their cooperation, you're going to end up with two separate access points to these two separate tiny parcels. So I think that there needs to be a lot of thanks given to those property owners for trying to work together, because you haven't seen that along that corridor. And then secondarily, not my issue, but as a professional planner, I think that the compatibility issue has been addressed in several ways. One, the use is consistent with your comprehensive plan. You allow even industrial uses in this land use category, so the proposed car wash with enhanced buffering and architecture, we think, has met the compatibility test. So we hope you support it as proposed. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And that is that for that. Regardless of what council decides to do, I, I think probably if, if council and staff feels really strongly that a particular use shouldn't be allowed in, in a corridor or a particular area, there ought to be a threshold to, that, that makes it either impossible or discourages anyone from even considering it. I mean, I mean, I think out of fairness to everybody concerned, because if, if we leave something to where you can get it by special exception, there ought to be at least, okay, in the special exception, the criteria you're going to have to meet is you're going to have to do this, 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 and this. And so I, I, I think if we struggle in, in a, in a zoning like this to kind of, to try to find some reason not to allow something, we haven't really, I don't think, really done our job as council. You know, we, if we don't like something, we may need to make it like really clear. And I don't think, I don't think we, we have really done that. And for us to wait till somebody goes through all the hoops and meets all the criteria to deny them, I don't think that's probably fair. It may end up what happens, but I don't think that that makes it fair. But that's just, you know, regardless of what happens, let's make, let's see if we can make it a, a little more clear, anyway.
Do we need a supermajority on this?
You need four.
Four, okay, thank you.
You just need four votes.
Okay.
Counsel, any other discussion? I'm sorry, I forgot you were even here. See how good you are at your job? I probably, yeah. You need a break, are you okay? She's awesome. She does a good job. Write that down. Okay, counsel, what would you like? Do you need to have some more conversation here? Do you have any other questions? Do you have a motion to make? Let's, let her rip. Go ahead. You need something?
I don't, I'm ready to go.
Okay, any, anybody like to make a motion? I, I'll make a motion to, to approve and, and to approve with the cross-access that they had proposed, that the applicant has proposed, just to get something on the table here to see what council wants to do. Is there a second?
I'll second for a discussion.
There is a second and discussion. Anyone? We have a motion and a second to approve? Nothing? We're going to go to roll call, roll call.
Councilman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilman Sacta?
No.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilman Simmons?
No.
Councilman Gibson?
No.
Councilman Longcart?
No.
Okay, that's four noes, right? Did I count right? One, two, three, four? Okay, motion fails. So there is, do we need to take another vote?
I need to have findings for, if this is going to be a denial, because Florida Statute Section 166.031 does require us to provide a resolution explaining the findings for why you desire. You can state the findings as set forth in the staff report if you wish, or you can go through each one individually. or you can go through each one individually, whatever is your preference, counsel.
I don't recall doing that. I recall you crafting that before.
I will craft it. I just want to make sure, are you agreeing with the staff, the majority of counsel?
I would.
Counsel, I think that you, I won't put words in your mouth, but you're agreeing with staff's recommendation, right?
Yes.
Okay.
So the motion would be to uphold the staff recommendation of denial for the reasons set forth in the staff report.
Correct.
Bingo. Okay. Got it. And we don't need, that's a denial right there. You don't need to have another vote to deny?
I actually do need a vote to deny.
Is there a motion to deny? Or is there another motion?
Motion to deny.
There's a motion to deny and a second. Any other discussion? Roll call.
Councilman Sacta?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
No.
Councilman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Longcard?
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh?
Okay. That motion passes. The motion's denied. And that's it. Okay, Audrey, we're going to go on to, thank you, everyone, for coming in. And we are to item six.
Okay. Six is a, excuse me, I'm tired.
Eleven.
One moment.
When I say six?
Yeah.
That's a Roman numeral.
It's eleven.
That's an X, not a V.
It's a different language, man.
Okay. Roman numeral eleven, A. Following second reading, this is an ordinance of the City of Benita Springs, Lee County, Florida, extending the territorial limits of the City of Benita Springs, Florida by the annexation of unincorporated tracts of land owned by Estero Bay Marine LLC, Donovan LLC, and Sugar Mountain Development LLC for Phase Two, also known as Weeks Fish Camp, line contiguous two, and being in the same county as the City of Benita Springs, Lee County, Florida, located in Section Seven, Township 47 South, Range 25 East. It's 30.51 more or less acres, assignment to City Council District One, and providing for an effective date. This ordinance is being continued from the June 17, 2015 City Council Public Hearing, which it was a second reading at that time, because there was some property that they had anticipated on closing that had not closed yet. I have received the deeds of the closed parcels. It's all now fully closed, and we can, where's Ms. Montgomery? And we can get forward. Ms. Montgomery does represent the applicant.
Okay. Counsel, do you have anything to say before we go to public comment? Okay. We'll stop the public hearing at this time. Anyone wishing to speak to this matter, please come forward, and this matter only. Going, going. Peter's not coming up. Okay. We'll close the public hearing. Counsel, what's your pleasure?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to second. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Sacta?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Longcard?
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh?
Aye.
Okay. Item B.
Thank you. This is an ordinance of the City of Benita Springs, Florida, amending Chapter 36, Taxation and Finance, Article Two, Purchasing and Authority, Amending Authority Title and Citation Definitions, Adding Types of Purchasing Methods, With Responsibility for Purchasing, Planning, E-Verify, E-Verify Verification, Purchased Transactions, Amending Sections, Including Purchases and Contracts Exempt from Competitive Bidding, Waiver of Competitive Bidding by City Council, Emergency Purchases, Incumbrance of Funds, Inspection of All Materials and Services Purchased, Surplus Property Transfer, Sale or Exchange, Cooperative Purchases by City and Other Governmental Agencies, Local Vendor Preference with Reciprocity, Creating Section 36/33, Dispute Resolution and Protest Procedure, Providing for Severability, Providing for Conflict and Repeal, and Providing for an Effective Date. This is the second reading of this ordinance, and Wright can provide you with a summary of the ordinance, as well as, if you notice on page two of the green sheet, it's a written summary of the ordinance.
Okay. Counsel, do you have any questions before we go to public comment? Anything? This time, we'll go to the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak to this matter only, and please come forward. Seeing none. Counsel, what's your pleasure?
Motion.
Motion to approve. Is there a second? Motion to second by Peter. Any other comments? Questions? Roll call.
Councilman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilman Sacta?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Longcard?
Aye.
Okay, item C.
Thank you. This is a second reading and public hearing of the following ordinance. This is an ordinance repealing and replacing Benita Springs Code Sections 24-1 through 24-8, the flood ordinance to adopt the flood hazard reduction ordinance, Sections 24-100 through 24-214, designating a floodplain administrator, adopt procedures and criteria for development in flood hazard areas and for other purposes, provide for conflicts of law, severability, codification, and scrivener's errors, modifications that may arise from consideration at public hearing and effective date. This is a second public hearing. I've reviewed the affidavit of publication, and it is legally sufficient. Both John Gucciardo and Community Development have worked on the ordinance and can provide you with any input, including the questions that you asked at the last meeting that John has researched.
Okay. Counsel, any questions? Concerns? All right. And we'll go to public hearing at this time. Anyone wishing to speak to this matter, please come forward. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Counsel, what's your pleasure?
A motion again.
There you go.
I'll second.
We got a motion to second. You guys running the show here. Any other, anything else? No? No? Roll call, please.
Councilman Sacta?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Longcard?
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh?
Aye.
Okay. Audrey, can anything else for us there that I didn't read, or whatever? No? Not at this time?
Yes, sir.
Didn't think so. We're to item 12, as I hear that that's read. Public hearing, hold the first of two public hearings, discuss the City of Benita Springs Community Development Block. That sounds like it's got John written all over it.
All over it. Yeah. This time of year, typically, we bring to you the proposals that staff has put together regarding use of CDBG funds. We have to hold two public hearings. And then, after the two public hearings, we hope to get direction from counsel about just the general purpose. General purpose, again, that the staff is recommending is using these funds for public infrastructure projects. At your July budget workshop, we typically bring you specific projects that would fall under that definition of infrastructure projects. And I just want to give you a little preview. While we know that this year's CDBG allocation is about $270,000, the total amount available for projects that you'll be asked to weigh in on at the budget workshop is probably closer to the neighborhood of $750,000, because we have last year's allocation plus some carryover funds from a previous year, as we move projects around and save money on some projects that weren't done. Having said that, there is one thing in particular I want to point out that's a little bit different this year, and that is that we've had a request from Pueblo Benito to help them with a project that they are working on. We believe it fits under the concept that staff has previously recommended, is actual bricks and mortar, as opposed to putting these dollars towards services or programming. They're looking to expand their facility so that they can do what they do on a bigger and better basis. Dave Hanson, I believe, may still be here or can come and talk to you if you want at some point about that. Again, tonight, we're not really, really looking for direction on that specific project, but just the general concept that we're looking to spend the dollars on public infrastructure.
And that's the main thing to concentrate for. We're really, this public hearing is actually so we can get public's input on it and things that they may want to do.
Right, and find out what other things might be, yeah, exactly.
Counsel will have their opportunity during the budget time to decide exactly what kind of public infrastructure you want to spend on, right?
Exactly.
Okay. Counsel, we got it? We all good? Let's go ahead and open the public hearing at this time. Anyone wishing to speak to this matter on the Community Development Grant, please come forward.
Mr. Mayor.
Yep, here we got one.
Great.
Good evening.
Good evening. Dave Hanson with Partnership and Housing, mayor, counsel. Thanks. Good to be back here again. It's been a few years. But we haven't done much over at Pueblo Benito since about 2009. And I just want to say for the record that we're very appreciative of the support we've had historically, just both in principle and also financially with the projects that we've had there. Currently, what we've wanted to do is to expand the existing community building. We have a Boys and Girls Club that's dedicated to the Pueblo Benito community that serves about 80 to 90 children a day, and that's during the summer and during school. And unfortunately, our occupancy limit is about 65 people. So we shuffle them around and, you know, just kind of move them around. So we can accommodate the 80 or 90. However, we're proposing to expand the facility so that we can accommodate 130 children, which is about the population at Pueblo Benito of the children that's eligible to join the club. And so we're going to, we've already gone through some planning and preliminary budgeting, and we've asked that the city would consider providing us with some CBDG funding for this project. The ballpark budget's about $300,000, and Pueblo Benito Partnership and Housing will put in probably about $125,000 plus, depending on some of the construction costs. We haven't nailed those down completely, but we've requested the city match our input and provide us with a Community Development Block grant of the same amount, of about $125,000.
Okay. All right. Well, good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Anyone else this time? Please come forward. Seeing none, they closed the public hearing. John, the grant that he's requesting, or public grant that he's requesting, we would make that at the same time, that decision at the same time during the budget period?
Yes. Our plan is to bring you some suggestions from Public Works, Parks and Rec, and also this one from Dave's organization.
As an option. Okay.
As options, right.
All right. Well, good. And thank you very much, Dave, and thank you for the work that you do over there. Counsel, what would you like to do?
Mr. Mayor, yeah, I'd like to move forward, but between now and the time we have a budget meeting, I'd ask my fellow city council people to stop out and take a look at what they do. When they talk about 80 to 90 kids, when you see the size of the facility they have, it's cramped. It's not adequate for what they do, and it's not just getting together and having fun and playing basketball and volleyball. They train out there. They teach kids not only skills, they teach them valuable lessons and manners and respect and so on. So I heartily ask you to step out there, take a look, talk to the kids, and see what really goes on out there. And Dave Hanson, thank you for all your work.
Yeah, it'd be a good idea, Dave, if you can get as many of us out there as you can sometime. Good. Thank you very much.
You need to sign up.
All right, good.
I am.
Yeah. Sign me up. You sign me up? He signed me up for camp. Great.
Round us all up and bring us out at once.
Again. I went last summer.
Call for the new council.
You'll get rid of me soon enough. Don't worry about it, pal. Okay. Counsel, what would you like to do? You want to go ahead and, let's see, what do we need to do with this?
We'd be moving this to a second hearing.
Moving to a second hearing?
I've moved.
Mr. Motion over there. Mr. Second, got it. Bill got it. Nicely done, Bill. We have motion to second. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Sacta?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Longcard?
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh?
Aye.
Okay. And we are on to public comment. Any member of the public wishes to speak on any city matter whatsoever, please come forward.
She's back.
Hello.
Yay, she's back.
Good evening.
Hi.
For the record, Kathy McGrath, you've had some serious decisions to make tonight, but I'm going to talk about some fun stuff. You might notice my t-shirt. You know what's coming up on Saturday, Stars Bangled Benita. And it starts with a Rotary 5K run at 7:30, and the firemen are putting on the parade. And if I'm not mistaken, I think we have one of the oldest, I think I heard, 57 years. And the theme this year is reaching for the stars, educating tomorrow's leaders. And then there's going to be, our event starts at 4 o'clock, and there's lots of fun stuff to do. The entertainment's great. We've got Railhead and the Ben Allen Band. There's watermelon ice cream. You all are going to be there. And we have awesome fireworks laser show starting at dusk. So have to remind everybody, no coolers, please, no coolers. And the next thing I'd like to bring up is we're getting ready for our second annual Benita Springs Film Festival. And if all of you remember, last year, it exceeded our expectations. It was fun. We had 21 entries. They were interesting. I want to remind everyone, this year, we're featuring the Imperial River. And there's a lot to see on the Imperial River, a lot of different things. And remember, there's no entry fee, any age, any subject, has to be G-rated, five to 15 minutes, and there's some wonderful cash prizes. I believe the top prize, the best overall, is $1,000. But there's also best depiction, and also one for the best aspiring filmmaker, and the Spotlight Magazine People's Choice. Now, the gala is not until November 5th at the Prado as last year. And if you all were there, you remember, it was a red carpet with champagne and hors d'oeuvres, and they showed clips of the things, and everyone was really excited about it. So let's make this one bigger and better, because I think we have a lot of talent here in Benita. The two girls that won last year were teenagers, $1,000. So you have time, but I think they have to be in in October. You'll be hearing more about this, but we want to, we really want some interest in this. We know there's talent here. We know someone can come up some real clever videos. So thanks for giving me this opportunity.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this time? Please come forward.
Good evening. Cheryl James, live in Benita Bay. I'm very nervous. I've never done this before.
Aw, bless your heart.
Trying to come to the meetings and get a little more involved. And I thought I was going to come up out of my chair. This was the first time I'd heard about the car wash. I've not heard any of my lady friends in any of our discussion about the car wash. Thank you for the vote that you did take. I was very upset about it. I will pass the word along to all of my friends and let them know about it. So I just want to let you know, I appreciate that you listened, and listen to your people who've worked on it. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you very much. Anyone else this time? Please come forward.
Hey, Ben. Good evening. Ben Hershinson. Always been the opposite view, but remember years ago, going to an aquarium with a bunch of my dean friends, and the thousands of sardines going in the tank. And there was a couple going this way, and said, Ben, that's you. I kind of take that.
I didn't mean that.
Anyway, when I run HOA meetings and stuff, I'm always concerned about when you have architectural committee meetings, and someone, a particular request comes in, and someone says, well, I don't like it, I'm going to vote against it. I observed something that happened tonight, and I, by the way, for disclosure, I know nobody from the car wash or whatever, anybody involved with it. But as I observed here as a citizen, I'm saying to myself that they voted against something because they didn't like it, or was there a valid reason? I don't know. I left here kind of perplexed. So maybe post-meeting, someone can explain to me what basically happened a few minutes ago. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ben. Anyone else this time? Please come forward on any city matter. Boy, we can clear a house out, can't we? Not so much fun anymore, is it, guys? All right. Well, that's it for public hearing and public comment. And we are to the city attorney's report, and you've got a big list right there. What do you got? Exactly. And we're to city managers. What do you got, Carl?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First off, review of the monthly financial reports that we've sent to you. Stand by for any questions. Questions? Okay. Second one, Mr. Gucciardo here has some thoughts about the Terry Wall that was brought up previously. John?
So a couple of meetings back, you received a petition from residents along East Terry Street asking that the council consider putting up a buffer wall at that location. They did comply with the process that we had set out previously, where we set up a protocol for these kinds of requests that come in from residents from time to time. As part of that protocol, we addressed specifically the idea of buffer walls or vegetative walls along roadways. And as per the protocol that we laid out, the request was taken in. It was evaluated by three staff members independently. The way that, and you have copies of the protocol in your packet, so you can see that the way it works, basically, there are some threshold questions that the applicant would need to get affirmative answers to. They did. So it then went to the scoring matrix. There are different categories that the staff members evaluate, and they are very subjective in some cases. They have a range of points that can be assigned. If the applicant scores, I think it was a 75, it would need to get a recommendation to go forward. We would then do that, and in this case, it did. Two out of the three people reviewing this came to the determination that it didn't meet that minimum threshold. So based on the protocol that you pulled together, we would then go forward, because that's the way we're authorized to act. So we're just looking for ratification from you, that we could go forward to then go through the normal process. On a job this size, we would normally bid it out. Because of where we are in the timing in our fiscal year, we wanted to point out that that process can start to take effect right now, but just as a practical matter, we probably wouldn't be doing this until after October 1 in your next fiscal year. So you'll see this as a line item in the budget that'll be coming to you over the next couple of weeks. Now, there was an interesting question raised by another member of the public about whether or not a vegetation rather than a buffer wall would be appropriate there. I guess we could entertain that. I guess we could entertain that. That was not what was requested from the residents, so if you wanted to pursue that, I imagine we'd have to get back to the residents and see if that's acceptable, if that's still something they would want us to proceed with, because obviously we wouldn't want to go off in that direction if it's not something that is going to satisfy them, at least without you having the ability to interact on that level. So we're here to get direction from you. We were prepared to go ahead with the buffer wall request because it did meet the protocol that you set out, but we'll take whatever direction council feels is appropriate.
Counsel, Steve?
John, were they asked about the vegetative wall?
No, I think that, you know, reading of the protocol we put together indicates that they could have asked for vegetation as opposed to a wall, but the request did come in for a buffer wall specifically.
Yeah. I'm kind of, I like vegetation, but...
No, I understand, and frankly, I haven't had that conversation with them, so I don't know if that would be acceptable or not. This is the first time I've heard of that.
Well, and it's pretty site-specific. It takes to do a berm, a vegetated berm, it looks great. It really is. Jesse is exactly right. If you had every preference of the world, you would build, always build those instead of a wall. However, site-specific wise, it takes a lot of space, so when you have these situations where the house is eight feet from the sidewalk, you can't do it. So it just depends on the area, I guess, and I suppose the people there in the neighborhood. In this particular situation, so that the public doesn't have a copy of a map or anything like this, where is this directly? It's a royal, but is it on the four-lane section of East Terry Street? Is that what it is?
It's on the, no, I believe the two-lane section because it's further east.
It's east of Imperial.
Of Imperial, right.
It's east of Imperial on the two-lane, we'll call it the unimproved section.
I guess.
Pretty, I think that's fair. Unimproved section of East Terry Street along the section there. We've had a lot of complaints along that section right there, right?
We have.
About noise and trucks, particularly from one person, we'll say.
What I could suggest, and again, because frankly, I hadn't, since we weren't asked about vegetation, I hadn't been thinking along those lines, but if it's acceptable to counsel, I can get with Matt, Public Works. We could see if, A, a vegetative option as opposed to a wall option would even fit in that location. If it could fit in that location, I can get back to the applicants and see if that's acceptable to them, given those stages, understanding that if that's not the case, either if it doesn't fit or if it's not acceptable, we would then proceed with the normal process for a wall. Does that sound reasonable?
Yeah, and the other thing, regardless of where you do that before, I'd like to see an aerial with where the property line and where the easement lays out for future reference because before we go building a wall up in a place that is obviously going to need to be, I would assume, be four-lane someday, I'd like to be sure what we're doing to ourselves, in other words, when we do this. And if there is room, you know, to do something in, if we do have room to do something like a vegetative buffer in there, well, fine, that's great, but if we don't, well, then we can kind of take that off the table. Okay? Is that okay, Counsel?
I was going to say, and is this, I'm sorry if I missed this, is this just kind of a site wall or is it a sound barrier as well?
More a site wall, I think. People understand that those types of walls will do something about sound mitigation, but...
So it's more for, it's for sight?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And this is an interesting question because all these walls that we're building, and there really is a visual impediment. People will think, because psychologically you think that you get some reduction in sound, but we did a study on it when we were proposing it for the people along Imperial, and we brought on some statistics there. We were working with, I was working with the engineer at that time, and they said in order to decrease the decibels enough for somebody to tell, to be able to tell, is it louder, it would take a twenty-foot-tall wall. Twenty-foot-tall, I mean, very thick, solid concrete wall, or a hundred feet of vegetation.
Vegetation, right.
So it takes a lot to lower, so it's just a visual thing.
And I know the expectations of the folks who signed the petition are that, they understand that they're not going to get that much of an effect on the noise issue. They even refer to it in the application as a site wall.
Yeah, yeah. But I guarantee you, after the wall's built, if you ask them, is it quieter, they'll say yeah.
Probably.
But that's, but that's okay. So anyway, so Counsel, is it okay to give staff direction to go ahead and look into this more and give us some drawings to look at? Would that be okay?
I have some pictures from the area that were taken yesterday, and I'll pass them around to some different locations in those places where, what's already there.
Oh, thank you.
Not, obviously doesn't the, whatever the total footage is, but it's interesting.
It is. There's a whole bunch of different things there, isn't there?
It has fences, it has some walls, and the other thing is, I was interested about the three people, John, that you met with on staff, and there wasn't, it wasn't an unanimous decision to do this. It was two to one, I guess.
Two found that it met the scoring minimum, one found that it did not.
Okay, well, it also, probably one of the best ones I've ever seen as far as the vegetation is, of course, out east, it's Palmer Country Club, and boy, does that look beautiful without a wall, because we have a wall at Worthington Country Club because of different circumstances years ago. But even Serrano on Terry Street is another example. There are many places that the vegetation is obviously, and of course, in your presentation when we got this, this must be one of our walls that we had to do because of...
The four-laning?
That's the four-laner.
The four-laners that we had to do, but it's one of those things we had to do. This is not that situation.
Well, and that brings up one of the things that I always think of is that when someone, when there is an existing road and somebody builds next to the existing road, it's a different situation, I would argue. It's a different situation than when we come in and we add two lanes and we add four lanes and we build a road closer to them. Two different situations. However, I would argue just as well as they would that, well, you've added more traffic to the road, so it's worse than it was, and so there's a lot of different ways to look at this, but I think for now, if we just go ahead and can get a drawing of what the right-of-way does, superposed over an aerial photo, it'll allow us to see what the options are.
Perfect.
All right?
And one other thing, the other thing is that this is a hundred and twenty-five thousand to do this particular location. Let's just say that we wouldn't have ten more, twenty, or thirty, or forty from other locations in the city. It could be pretty expensive.
If I might respond to that?
Yeah.
So when we were looking at this request from the residents, I did ask Matt, our Public Works Director, to do an assessment of the balance of the city, because I know that there have been arguments made earlier about, do we want to continue to be and become more of a walled city? And of course, that's a judgment on the part of councils, but Matt's thought was that in terms of the criteria that's already been established by council for determining whether or not, again, on these votes by the three-person committee, the established criteria really gets us to a point where we don't see where, according to that criteria, there's another place in the city that actually meets the criteria. So this may be, if you follow the criteria, this may be the last wall that'll be recommended by a three-person committee, according to the process.
Okay.
Yep.
All right. And, okay, Bill? Good. Mike?
Yeah, I mean, I just wanted to see us, come back to us, you know, with plans for vegetative buffer, and again, to see what the actual lot lines are before we go forward with anything.
That'd be good. Thank you. Good deal. John, do you have anything else?
I did, not related to that, but something that came up earlier when Carol and Ashley were up here. They did mention that as part of the things that survived the governor's vetoes was the five-hundred-thousand-dollar reimbursement amount for the beach renourishment project. And I wanted to give you an update on that. I've already met with our counterparts at the county about that. They were obviously pleased that we got that amount. That wasn't the total amount that we asked for, though, but we did get that amount, and we have already started the paper chase, as it were, the process to try to get that reimbursement money back to us. The reason why they're a little concerned, and I appreciate their jumping on this as quickly as they did, is that those funds came out of the Amendment one dollars, and we know of one lawsuit already, and there are probably going to be more lawsuits, you can predict, about the whole Amendment one thing and how it shook out. See, the idea is if we can get our request in and get it in the process quickly, who knows, before those funds get tied up, we might actually see those dollars. So we'll see what happens on that allocation of the five-hundred thousand, which will then be split between us and the county. We are also putting in an application in next year's budget for the balance of another two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars that we didn't get this year. So my thanks to the county and our counterparts up there for working with us so closely and being as proactive as they are.
Okay, good. Carl, what else you got?
Just a couple of more items. Couple of kudos, actually. First off, to Matt Feeney for completion of the Oak Creek dredging project. We are finished with that. Counsel will recall, this has got quite a history. We went to the state legislature two or three years in a row, got appropriated for two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. The governor vetoed the money. Finally, I think on the third or fourth year, we were able to avoid a veto. We did get the state funding for this. We did a little bit of a match with it, but a great project. I also want to thank one of the adjacent property owners to Oak Creek, Jim Halverson, who allowed us to store the spoils of the dredging on there until they dewatered and they were able to be hauled away. So a great cooperative effort between the state, the city, and also one of our property owners, and I appreciate that very much. Second, kudos to Nicole Perino, who was responsible for making our six cottages down in Riverside Park look a whole lot better with new paint jobs, new doors, windows, and those kinds of things, and we're getting great responses from our tenants about how great they look and how appreciative they are of the city trying to upgrade the look of those facilities. And with that, that's all I have, sir.
Thank you very much. Okay, and now we are to mayor and councilmember items. You got this one, Steve?
I got it. The composition of Veterans Advisory Committee includes two women auxiliary members, one from the American Legion, one from the Veterans of Foreign Wars. The committee has asked that I bring forth the name of Kathleen O'Hearn, and I therefore move to approve.
May I make this, I'll second that. Any other conversation or, no, any other comments? Roll call, please.
Councilman Simmons.
Aye.
Councilman Gibson.
Aye.
Councilman Longcarte.
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh.
Aye.
Councilman Slacta.
Aye.
Mayor Nelson.
Aye. Okay, Steve, you have anything else for us?
No, I do not, sir.
Okay, let's go ahead and jump around here a little bit. Pete, what do you have for us tonight?
I'm okay. Just happy Fourth of July to all.
Oh, thank you very much. Mike?
Yeah, same. I hope to see everybody out at the fireworks on the Fourth. Have a safe and happy Fourth.
Very cool. Bill?
Ben, I have a request.
All right.
And I'd like to know if the council is willing to allow me to be on this team with the staff in representing the library in negotiations that we've had so far, and I think we're all in receipt of the library letter that was sent to Dejarle, and I would like to be part of the solution and would like to act in that capacity to move it along with working with the county commissioners.
Okay, and up until this time, I've been involved, Carl and I have been the ones involved in that. Counsel can probably do what they want to do. I'll tell you, there may well come a time when I will be like, that's it, that's all I can, I've got nothing else, but I kind of like, as per charter, that's my job is to negotiate with the other governmental entities. That's kind of what I'm supposed to do, so I don't want to shirk my responsibility.
I wish we went, be part of the solution. Ben, you've tried, I know you've been diligent on this, and it's no question about what you've attempted to try to get on.
Well, I appreciate that, and what I want to do is exhaust, if I exhaust that ability, well, I'm more than willing to go ahead and hand it off to you, Bill, but...
Since it was my baby since two thousand and eight, I thought that we should be taking into consideration in terms of trying to move a new library into the city of Benita Springs, and we certainly are getting closer and closer to having that happen, but I'd like to be able to push it over the edge with, working with the county commissioners to accomplish it, and please, it's not to take anything away from any person on this council that's tried before, but I happen to think that I can get that with the help of obviously Carl and any other staff members that are involved, but I think it's a fair request.
Okay, well, Counsel, I hate to put you in a situation...
Let me ask a legal question.
Go ahead.
With two sitting councilpeople in the same negotiation, does that put us in a situation of sunshine laws were one, but do we need to advertise all the meetings at that point?
That's correct. Any meeting that would be done would have to be a sunshine, there'd have to be notices. The city clerk would need to make sure anytime there was a meeting, as long as both council members were there.
Look, I, this is simpler than that, and you're certainly not going to hurt my feelings on this thing, but if Counsel, if you would, if you want Bill to go ahead and handle the negotiation, you need to have one person doing this, one councilperson. I mean, yeah, I think it would get confusing, and because you'd be at cross purposes unless you were communicating with each other. So it's okay for all the councilpeople to lobby individual, the county commission when that comes, which we kind of do, but if you would rather, if you would rather Bill go ahead and work with Carl, negotiate with, it's Commissioner Keiker right now that we're negotiating with, I guess you could call it that, but if you, if Counsel, if you want Bill to do that, that's fine. It's up to you. And I hate to put you in that situation to make the decision, but I'm content to go ahead and keep working at it until I can't get anywhere, until I put my hands up, but if, and Bill has expressed a desire to do it, it's kind of like a liaison thing. Who do you want to be your liaison when it comes to that? How's that for a nice hot one to end the evening?
Mayor, if I may.
I personally feel that the mayor should be involved directly with the city manager. However, is there an opportunity for Bill to be involved with you folks also?
I think, I think the request is for Councilmember Longcarte to take the lead on, from an elected official's position in Benita Springs. That is, I think that his request that I hear. I don't, I don't see two elected officials from this board being involved in this in terms of negotiating, because I agree with the mayor, there needs to be one person that they know they can talk to. So, and of course, it just complicates things legally if you try to add a council member to the team and still leave the mayor on there. Just complicates things legally as well.
Okay. I guess I would just throw out, haven't had about eleven seconds to think about this, but Carl, you know, you know, I've seen Commissioner Keiker, and we've shared some, you know, just exchange, and we've given updates. I mean, what's really happening here? And I'm not trying to open up a can of worms, but I feel like we're in neutral on this project. Let's be frank about it. We've been batting it around for a long time. We've thrown in sixty million dollars. Let's just be, you know, whether the numbers are exact or they're not exact, received about twenty million back. You know, they came back to us and said, okay, well, if you want to library in Benita Springs, guess what? We have to increase the, we have to increase the fee, the millage rate. Oh, okay, great. And now we're still battling for a library? Really? I don't think that's progress.
Well, here's the status report. Here's the status report that, as it stands, they have the money to build a library. They've got it in their hot little hands, right?
Times three. Times three.
They've got it.
Right.
And so where we're at right now is, they're like, well, we're willing to build the library on the existing site, we can go and get started on there, or we can, where would you like it built? So we took them over, and we said, this is where council said they wanted to build it, which was on the church site that we specifically bought, and so, and so, as we met staff members and Larry over there, and we said, well, that's it, and they said, okay, well, let's go ahead and lay out what the parameters would be. And so we got on a phone call, phone conference with them, and we said, well, what the parameters would be, we think is fair. Of course, they wanted us to sign over the church property, which we said, well, it's fair, we can sign over the church property to where it was owned by the county, because that's where the building would be, but they also wanted us to sign over the title of the property where the banyan tree is in the community hall, and of course, I said, I don't think, I think the community would string everyone up for that. That's, to me, that's Benita Springs. And what we said we would do is that we're willing to go ahead and sign over the other property. In exchange, if you give us the property over there where the current library is, this is a fair exchange, it's almost dollar-for-dollar in value, we'll go ahead and sign over that piece of property, you can build it, and it's yours, and we will provide you with parking forever and ever contiguous to that site, we just won't, you just won't own the parking. I thought that was a fair compromise, and that's when they stopped talking. And so they, and then I had a phone call from Larry, and I can't even describe it, I don't know what it meant, but they want a vacation. What it was is that they were willing to put it on the agenda, but then we came to that point, and they said, well, that's different than what we want, so we're going to have to wait till we come back off recess, and so that's where we're at. And so I said, we're, I thought it was a good deal, Carl thought it was a good deal.
Yeah.
They kind of wanted to, I think they wanted to make money on the dig. That's what I think.
So I would say, we're certainly not neutral. I think that it's been moving along slowly. The county is, it's their project that's been taking them a while to get ready to go, because they are simultaneously looking at a library in North Fort Myers. They plan, I think, they have the ability or found the ability to build both libraries. In fact, our library will be designed the same as the North Fort Myers library, that saves four-hundred thousand dollars for the county, twenty-five thousand square feet and a single-story building. But yes, so we were fine until we hit the glitch of them wanting the front property, and the mayor and I both knew that this council would not go for that.
They want to own the banyan tree. No.
Right, so, so we're trying to work through the differences. There is a little bit of a difference, as the mayor indicated, in the value of the current property that we'd like to trade for the two acres on which the church exists right now. And in terms of geographics, their current site's larger than what we're offering downtown. However, in terms of normal real estate, okay, which is, your consideration is value of the land, you know, we're only eighty-five thousand to a hundred thousand dollars difference in value, as determined by the appraisers office. So I think if we can just keep discussions going, I think we're close. I don't think we're that far off, and we're hoping the county's prepared to continue those discussions. We do have some time, because the county commission is away for the entire month of July, so they won't be doing anything until August.
Well, and what we did, the reason that you saw the letter there, the reason we sent the letter is because we were dealing exclusively with our representative, Larry Keiker, and with Roger Dejarle, the county administrator, whatever he is, and so, but that's it. So what we wanted to do was to be sure that the entire county commission, just like you know what's going on here, the entire county commission knew what the deal was, because it's not unreasonable. I don't, I don't think, if any of you think that what Carl and I come up with was unreasonable, I don't think any reasonable person would say, wow, that's a horrible deal. It was a great deal, as I told Larry, I said, look, you're our representative, I expect you to go to bat for us here. I think this is a good deal for the county, it's a good deal for us. So there's where we are. So, anyway, that's how we got here.
Ben, I realize the effort that you've done over the sixteen years you've been city mayor, and in this particular circumstance, it's unique to me, because I was involved in '08 and '09, starting on the library task force and so forth, and having made inquiries myself to see if they would be amenable to me being part of the team, I would suggest to you that it would be a good idea, because I think that there's a possibility that I can help. I can't guarantee it, but I can help, because my relationship with every county commissioner, as far as I know, is in pretty good shape. But this particular issue has been dragged out so long, and the county commissioners have their opinions, and we have ours, and the most important thing is to get the new library where we wanted to have it, downtown, and I agree with that, and I think I can handle that, and I can at least make a maximum effort to do it if I fail.
So what you're telling me is that Larry doesn't want to deal with me anymore?
What I'm saying to you is that maybe that's one of the reasons...
It's okay to say it.
Well, I'm not going to, I can't speak for Larry Keiker, but all I can share with you is that, having seen them in action before with a lot of other issues, with the fire boards, a good example of how things get twisted and turned when they were trying to get the ambulances down here, and they had a deal, and it broke apart because of some kind of lack of communications on either party or both parties. So all I'm asking for is the opportunity to serve. That's all it's all about, to get the job done.
I understand. Counsel, pull the trigger here.
Well, I just had one more question, being as we're going to share the same design as North Fort Myers. I know originally we were hoping to have some meeting space that other people could use besides the library, you know, if we needed a larger venue for a meeting.
Thirty-five hundred square feet's in the new building. Thirty-five hundred of meeting space.
Yeah, and the other part of the deal there was that, although we agreed to the same footprint as the other one to, you know, because it's going to save some money, the exterior of the building, that we were going to have architectural input on the exterior of the building so far, is because it had to match our architectural standards downtown.
And they're fine with that.
And they're fine with that.
And I will tell you that we've already started preliminary discussions with them, and right now, we're just trying to get the location set. That's where we're at right now. Next step will be to try to negotiate a way to get us another two-thousand square feet or so for our new deputy substation down there as well.
So anyway, counsel, don't be bashful.
No, I feel like I'm just, you know, here we are having this discussion, it's up to us, but I feel like it's, look, we've gone round and round and round and round with the county, and it's deplorable. It's just, it's sad, you know, I was the one that offered up here that, hey, let's secede from Lee County, right? Let's have our own library. Let's take our own sixty million dollars and see what we can do with it. So why we have to beg for the taxpayers' dollars of Benita Springs to get a library, and for convenience sakes, nothing against North Fort Myers, but go along with a plan that we may or may not like ourselves, is ridiculous. I just think the whole situation has gone on way too long, wasn't even on my radar screen here tonight, but a year or so ago, we had a very strong conversation about this, very close vote up here on this subject, and we got to increase taxes, and we still have nothing. So, I mean, just talking in circles here, but that's how I feel about it.
All right, so counsel, would you like Councilman Longkart to go ahead? And we don't need to belabor this, if you'd like him to go ahead and take over negotiations with it, such as they are, just say the word. But I mean, because I'm going to get, I'm going to just let this go here. Somebody make a motion, somebody do something, if you don't want to do it, go ahead.
Bill, with all due respect, you know, we're three-quarters of the way down, and I really feel in my heart that something's going to happen good, positively, so, and I don't think it's a good idea to take someone out that's been in the negotiation process, so, it's the way I feel.
All right. Anyone else? If you want to make a motion, I mean, that's fine, and Bill, I got to tell you, if I hit an impasse, if I think, if I'm of no use anymore, I will be the first one to say, I'm out, I'm going to have to, I'm going to have to tag out, and that's just it. But, I mean, unless counsel says something else, we're going to move on. All right?
Well, all I can share with you is that I'm disappointed that you can be so narrow sometimes with people. I'm pretty much open to almost anything in terms of understanding things, and it's the process that has to be moved forward, and when the process is not moving forward for specific reasons, then there has to have some other action by some other individual, and it's strictly something that I started. It's not that I've been involved with all the library task force, everything along the way, I've allowed other people. Certainly, go ahead, go for it. We've discussed that, not necessarily off the record, but, you know, how you're doing with the library, and you're saying how frustrating it is, and I happen to think I have a solution to the problem, and that's why I asked for that request tonight. That's all it was, it was request.
Well, I appreciate that, but...
Obviously, it doesn't, well, I don't know, I guess we should probably have a vote on it, at least to see...
Make a motion.
Make a motion to, appoint myself to represent the...
There's a motion, Bill making a motion to appoint himself as the liaison. Is there a second?
A second.
There's a motion, a second. Any other discussion? Roll call.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Longkart?
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh?
Nope.
Councilman Slakta?
No.
Mayor Nelson?
No.
Councilman Simmons?
Aye, caramba.
That was an aye. It's...
It's, aye.
So it's tied, the motion fails. Okay, so we're going to move on, and I do promise you that if something doesn't come out of this, and if you have a suggestion, you're likely to share it with Carl, and staff, you know that if you thought I was doing something that was spoiling the chances of us moving along here, you would tell me, wouldn't you?
Yes, sir.
Okay?
You better.
All right. Okay, we're going to move on there. That was awkward.
Yeah.
Okay, whose turn is it? Bill, that was yours. Bill, do you have anything else for us?
I'm not finished, let me say something.
Okay.
I'm looking forward to the Fourth of July parade, and it's always a lot of fun, and I look forward to seeing everybody. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Stephen, I finally got to you.
That's fine, thank you. Just a few quick things, I'm sorry, it's a late hour, I know. Thank you to the members of the Benita Springs Rotary Club this morning for spending the morning raking leaves at the Wonder Gardens. It's a botanical garden, leaves drop every day, and they spent the morning making sure it was cleaned up. That is one of the focal points of us becoming an ecotourism center in Florida, and I appreciate what they've done this morning to help that move along. While we talked about budgets earlier, Florida Gulf Coast University did get the south entrance through the legislature and the budget, which means that it will be a safer way to get into Florida Gulf Coast University, and since all the growth will be on the south portion of that property, this will give us a new entrance, give the university a new entrance that's very efficient and far more economical for the students, buses, and for bicycles. And finally, we opened three homes in the Habitat Project Habitat area over off of Red Hibiscus onto Red Blossom over the weekend, three families. For those of you who think it's a handout, it is not. These people have mortgages, they've been trained and gone through classes in financial management, homeownership, and homeowner association projects. We put three families in homes who have spent over two-hundred hours each building their own home, and with that sweat equity, so congratulations to the new citizens of Benita Springs. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I only have one thing. This zoning thing bothered me tonight, and I don't mind counsel's decision in particular. I think that we owe it to make this process a little more clear when it comes to, you know, when we start saying things like, it's not, this particular use that you're proposing is not within our vision, that's too nebulous. It's not, I don't think that's fair, I think that we can do better, and I'm going to include myself in that. I think that we all, all staff, we owe it to the public to go ahead, and if we don't want car washes along there, let's just say, no car washes. We would have saved that guy a lot of time, a lot of money, and that's what we need to do. And if there's, there's got to be a way to do that a little bit better, because we can't, let's not be catty about it, let's not mull around, let's just get to the point. Let's get to the point to where there are uses along there, where we say, you know what, you're going to, I don't know, you're going to have to make it to where there's no sound outside or something. So it's really clear that, no, you're not going to get that. So that's what I'll leave you with tonight. I don't want to do that. I know, I can tell that you guys didn't want to do that either. As much as you didn't want to see that use, you knew that that young man worked really hard at that application and buying that property. You didn't want to do that, I could tell you didn't want to do that. So let's not put ourselves in that position, let's fix this, okay?
And if I just might, in response to that, staff is already working with Waldrop Engineering with regards to additional standards on New Forty-One, and we're going to be addressing those issues.
Good, I appreciate that. Okay, and at this time, let's go ahead, would you like to approve the minutes, counsel?
Most approve.
We have a motion to approve, is there a second? Oh, my good old motion and second are here. Roll call, please.
Councilman Longkart?
Aye.